For the people on Zoom, I just wanted to let you know the board meeting has started. We still do not have our audio connection as well as we're having internet connections inside of the boardroom. So we're hoping to relieve this, but the meeting has started. I will try to get an update as soon as possible if one will get this fixed for folks. But just wanted to let folks know that we haven't forgotten about you. We're just trying to work this out. Sorry for the inconvenience.
Hola, mi nombre es Luis Castro y soy madre de un hijo que va a kindergarten en Chile. Y lo mismo está pasando con una maestra, de la misma maestra que hemos estado hablando. No sé por qué la escuela, el director ha decidido sacarla o quererla sacar. Para mí ella es una excelente maestra, no ha hecho nada y siempre ayuda a los niños en lo que ella puede. No solo a los niños, sino tiene mucha confianza o contacto con sus padres también. Para mí se me hace injusto lo que están haciendo con ella o lo que quieren hacer. Y yo pido que se le dé otra oportunidad, que sean justos y que piensen qué es lo que quieren hacer antes de cometer un error. Porque para mí Flynn va a dejar ir a una maestra que es, como he dicho, es excelente maestra. Y mi hijo él ha agarrado confianza con ella, algo que para él es muy difícil de hacerlo con personas que él no conoce. Y él no hace mucho, perdió su papá y no quiero que él esté traumando por estar escuchando cosas como esta, que su maestra se va a tener que ir o no va a trabajar más en la escuela. Espero que se pueda hacer algo y es, para mí es muy triste y molesto la situación que estamos pasando.
Hi, hello. I'm a mom of Flynn and I am very concerned that my son's teacher is going to be fired. And this is something that I want you to be just. And I want you to think of all the good things that the teacher has been providing to not just my son, but everybody at the school. And I feel that my son is going to be traumatized knowing that his teacher is going to be fired. So I want you to be honest and do the right thing. And please make something in order for the teacher to stay. Please don't let her go. Thank you.
At the beginning of the year, our daughter was hesitant to speak and learn in Spanish. But with Ms. Flynn's support and encouragement, our daughter's speaking, singing, and reading in Spanish. Ms. Flynn's curriculum and classroom engagement has helped build our daughter's confidence and make learning in a bilingual environment fun and dynamic. It's so engaging that our daughter frequently role plays school at home, miring Ms. Flynn's lesson plan and speaking to us with the same intonation. It's obvious to us that Ms. Flynn can read the last expression. Furthermore, Ms. Flynn has continuously gone above and beyond throughout the year. For planned absences, she would notify parents and lead lesson plans for substitutes. She is also an integral leader in supporting the educational needs of another Spanish immersion classroom, whose teacher failed to return this year. She provided instruction and curriculum guidance to the many substitutes that were continuously assigned. Flynn administration has benefited from her hard work and has made her feel dispensable, suddenly no longer essential to the organization. Please review Ms. Flynn's contributions to Flynn.
Good evening. My name is Monica Scott. My daughter is in CF's kindergarten class at Flynn Elementary. CF received notice of nonrelection without cause and I called the board to rescind this. CF has shown extraordinary dedication to our school community, working with a population that has been hit hardest by the effects of COVID. CF inspired or told them to learn and love school while providing welcome communication to parents. Flynn struggled to reestablish a sense of community without in-person events. But CF has stepped up and organized a holiday performance in the yard, as well as an end-of-year celebration at a nearby park for multiple kindergarten classrooms. The district should be working to recruit more teachers of CF's caliber. Instead, her career is on track to be cut short with no regard for her role in the team's community or for our children. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Eliela. Soy mamá de un niño de kinder de la Flynn. Y la situación que estamos viviendo me pone el corazón de quebrada, ¿verdad? Porque yo he visto, ¿verdad?, a la maestra y al niño, que ella ha sido, es una pieza grande de la escuela Flynn y...
We lost sound. We cannot hear anything.
Ha aprendido bastante y nosotros lo queremos demasiado a ella. Espero, ¿verdad?, que podemos ayudar a ella, ¿verdad? Ella ha sido una buena persona como madre también, ¿verdad? Que ella a veces se molesta, ¿verdad?, y llamarnos para ver que a veces nuestros niños se nos enferman, para ver cómo están nuestros niños y la verdad es algo doloroso para nosotros.
I'm also here to say that... I'm also here to say that we give support to this teacher. And she's been very dedicated, she's been helping our children. And it breaks my heart knowing that she's going to be gone. And it's also, she's always been there being supportive. When our kids, one of our kids gets sick, she actually calls and checks with us how the student is doing, if he's getting better. And it's really hard to know that someone who's so important to the community and also she's a mother. And I just want you to do something for her. Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes, soy Susana Lepe, mamá de un niño llamado Mario Lepe, que estudia en la escuela Flynn y él está en kindergarten con la profesora del caso. Y para mí es muy lamentable lo que está sucediendo con ella porque en restripto a mí, a mi familia, a mi niño, para mí ha sido un apoyo moral, psicológico y académico para mi hijo. Porque mi hijo padecía de un problema que ni nosotros como padres podíamos ponerle. Y la maestra de Flynn, de kindergarten, ella me ha ayudado mucho. Y mi niño también padecía de miedo, de muchas cosas como psicológicas. Y yo sé que ella está capacitada hasta psicológicamente para educar a mi hijo y también académicamente. Y también ella tiene mucho amor en su corazón para darle a los niños porque ella ha enseñado a ser a mi hijo valiente, responsable y estudioso y muchas cosas que nosotros no podemos como padres. Porque quiero que entiendan que nosotros a veces nos estamos, enfocamos en el trabajo, en las protecciones de la familia y a veces no tenemos tiempo para dedicarle a los niños. Y la maestra ella ha sido como una madre para mi hijo y yo he tenido varios niños en Flynn. Y yo sé que si la maestra el siguiente año no va a estar ahí, mi hijo llega y digo, oh wow, la maestra dónde está. Entonces se va a sentir triste su corazón porque no la va a cuidar. Y mi hijo ama mucho a la maestra, yo la aprecio mucho. Y yo sé que con la ayuda de Dios que esto va a salir positivo para ella porque ella se merece una oportunidad, porque ella es un ser humano útil a la sociedad, útil para Estados Unidos, útil para la comunidad hispana. Útil para mucho es la maestra de escuela de Leonard Flynn. Y yo quiero que se tome en su corazón y en su pensamiento para darle otro...
Hi, I'm Mrs. Lepe and my son Mario Lepe attended kindergarten with the teacher that we're talking about. And thanks to, thanks to my son's teacher, he has been able to be a better student. When he actually first went into kindergarten, he was very fearful. He had a lot of issues and with her help, he was actually able to get better. She is a valuable person and she's a valuable tool for the school. I mean, like she even does things that a lot of teachers don't do. And it's very important for the school community. And also she's important for the country and it's important for the Latino community. And knowing that she's no longer going to be with us, it breaks my heart. And also it will break my son's heart when he comes back and he's not be able to see her. So I have confidence in God that he, that she, she will be back at school. And I want to know if you have something in your heart to please help her so she can come back next year. She's an amazing person and a valuable tool for our school. Thank you.
This is Josephine Zhao. Just wanted to speak up for the Chinese Biding Bowl and other Biding Bowl educators. Just make sure. I did not call you here for the speaker.
I'm going to call the next round of speakers and I want to thank the community for coming this evening. Next grouping of speakers for the Aptus community. Travis, welcome. Maria Sanchez. Carlos Alvarado. Jacqueline Simero. Marissa. Carolyn. Caitlin and Marissa. Eunice Naval, Clayton, where me.
Again, I ask, given our numerous speakers, we kindly ask if folks would be willing to consolidate your time. That's the request. We also have public comment virtually as well. Go ahead, you have one minute.
All right, so we're losing one school counselor, a math position, two coaches. Last year, we had a maternity leave for one of our counselors and so she was out for half the year. That put such undue stress on the rest of the counseling department. To go through that next year is really unsustainable. Like it's literally impossible for them to do their jobs like that. Additionally, our understanding is that the revised budget, the money is going to come in. So it's possible that we're just going to have to rehire these positions in September after the start of the year, which makes no sense, right? So we need these positions funded immediately. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Sanchez and I'm the eighth grade math teacher at Aptus Middle School. I'm here today to advocate for the needs of our students and community members. This is my seventh year at Aptus and I cannot express how resilient our community has been throughout my time here. But I'm here today to express my deepest concerns about the state of our school. As you may know, we currently work with approximately 975 scholars. Due to the budget crisis, our school has been forced to cut services to our students by eliminating very valuable positions, which include one grade level counselor and one school staff support. These positions cannot be consolidated. They are needed in order for the students to feel safe, supported, and loved. During the pandemic, our support staff mentored students to encourage them to come to school and mentored them along the way. I can't tell you the number of times counselors have helped us with community circles, helping students with application process for high schools, their wellness checks, home visits, and that's just to say some. We need so much more. Cutting these services do more harm than good. This year has been a challenging year. Push for the money, we need the money to hold very important and indispensable positions. We need the money now, now!
Hi, sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Simero. I'm the vice president of the Aptus School Site Council and I attend eighth grade at Aptus Middle School. Speaking from experience, I can honestly say that we really need our counselors. When I was applying for high school, I needed multiple recommendations. And one of the options for people to write a recommendation was my counselor. I immediately thought that my counselor, Mr. Reyes, would be the perfect person to write me a recommendation. Over the course of middle school, you get to know your counselors so well. And if we take one away, students won't be able to connect with them the way I was able to. And that will majorly affect our community. Even with the counselors, this year has been so hard for everyone. And I can't imagine how much worse it would be without them. If our school loses a counselor, my peers would be losing someone they trust and who actually understands our problems. Please do not cut our school's funding for counselors. We can't afford to lose them. With the ratio of students to counselors nearly 900 to 2, their job will be essentially impossible. Thank you and please do not cut our funding!
Hi, good evening. My name is Eunice Naval, but I'm actually speaking for Amanda Vu. She is currently the student body president at Aptus Middle School and an eighth grader. At Aptus, every member of our staff is important to the well-being of our school. Our school already feels like as if we lack support and cutting some of our faculty team will greatly affect students' learning. We are being forced to cut out a counselor, T-10, and two coaches. How will our school function? The state of California has the money to support our school. Use it. Students need more support and mental health services. Taking away support staff will just make it harder for students and the existing staff. It is unreasonable to cut these positions that are crucial to our school's well-being. Each and every student deserves the attention, the safety, the unbiased and uninterrupted support that our counselor's support staff give each and every single day. The SFUSD District Board of Education can make this right for the 900 students at Aptus Middle School. Please do not cut our funding.
I'm Carolyn Karlovic and I'm going to be yielding my time to Sarita Lavin.
Hello, my name is Sarita Lavin and I'm a teacher at George Washington High School. Board, I wish I had seen you last week when you were invited to join my fellow teachers and I in our action attending the payroll and salary offices in an attempt to get our numerous pay issues resolved. Unfortunately, you were not there continuing a pattern of silence. But one of the people in this room was there, the superintendent. Dr. Matthews, I'm deeply disappointed in you specifically. You are ultimately responsible for ensuring your employees are paid. This empower fiasco is on you. The illegal violations of our contract, the unpaid back pay, DNP interest not being paid on our missing 403B deductions. Among numerous other issues, teacher layoffs, i.e. not being a school holiday, that's on you. I know the amount of money being stolen from me by the district means nothing to someone who makes six figures. But it matters to me, an educator who lives paycheck to paycheck. You should be embarrassed by the fact that you lied and said you were not in the building when over 30 teachers attempted to meet the salary office last Wednesday, taking personal days and were shut out by security. It was truly demoralizing to see you attempt to sneak out the back and drive away in your BMW instead of paying your teachers and employees that pay their legally owed. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alejandra Contreras and I am one of the music teachers at Aptus Middle School. In addition to the other positions that Aptus is losing, we are losing our band program. Music is essential to all human beings. Students need the opportunity to make music in school. It is one way students cope with stressful times, connect with other students, and express their creativity. Please help us keep our band program at Aptus Middle School. Thank you for listening.
Hi, I'm Clay Wheatong. I'm the computer science teacher at Aptus Middle School. And as my colleagues have said, we're losing a counselor, a T-10, both of our coaches, a math teacher, and our band program at Aptus next year. And I would hope that like anyone who had spent time with students, with educators this year, would recognize what a difficult year it's been due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and just making sure like all of our community's needs are met. So I find it deeply disappointing that during this troubling time, that positions are being cut. So I deeply urge the Board of Ed to like find some solutions, secure funding for our school so the needs of our students can be met adequately. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dr. Huntley. I am the dean head counselor at Aptus Middle School. At this moment, I want to ask every panel member sitting around this table here, if you can just disconnect for like 15 seconds from your electronic devices. I want you to take a look at this for just a moment. I know this must be the buzzword going on about cutting and mental health. But as a school counselor, we do this every single day. Imagine your child, your niece, your nephew, your best friend's child, wanting to go and see their counselor to talk about something and don't have the opportunity to do that. And you wake up the next morning and they're no longer here. Cutting a school counselor at a school with the capacity of almost 1,000 students is beyond measure. I deeply, deeply encourage you to reconsider. One of my favorite characters is Wonder Woman. I often wear a shirt that say Wonder Woman, but I am not she. It's no way possible I can be the dean head counselor and the seventh grade counselor. It's not possible. It's not possible. If you think it is, I encourage you. Do a will. Each of you take nine weeks and come and fit in the role as a grade level counselor and support that role. And you tell me how you feel.
Hi, we are the counselors at Aptus Middle School who've had the privilege of working with Dr. Huntley. My name is Caitlin.
My name is Francis.
My name is Marissa.
When we learned that a counseling position was cut for next school year, we were shocked. Asking our dean of students to step in as a grade level counselor is unreasonable and unfair. It's not fair to our students. The decision to cut a counseling position does not align with the district's vision. This is not a student-centered decision. Because we feel that maybe a lot of people don't know what counselors do on a day-to-day, we're going to briefly explain to you some of the things that we've done in the past week.
Risk assessments consulted with CPS.
We've made safety plans for our students who have had self-harm or have been in dangerous situations.
I have to go to a family's house as soon as I leave here for an incident that happened today.
We've held restorative meetings between teachers and students. We've gone to foster care placement meetings. We've done safety plans. We supervise. We consult with admin. We do so much every single day. To expect that next year, one dean and two counselors get this done for 900 students is unreasonable.
Hey, what's up y'all? My name Carlos. I grew up in San Francisco, California. I'm a graduate of San Francisco City College of San Francisco, San Francisco State. I'm now a paraprofessional at Aptus. And really it's an honor and a privilege and for real. And I could smell the disrespect in the, what's it called? It ain't no y'all without us. Believe that. All right? Y'all get paid six figures. Matthews, I don't know what you want. I don't know you personally. But you cutting positions, you cutting the livelihood of people. Look at all these people in the room right now. They shouldn't be here right now. And y'all in position of power right now. And all y'all got to do is vote? Come on now. Y'all don't want to see people organized for real, for real. I'm just at the mic now. I just want to take the time since I don't believe they'll give y'all the love. Everybody in this room, thank y'all for what y'all do. The children, it's an honor and privilege to see these kids. Y'all don't know how cool kids are, for real. Y'all got the money. It's a surplus. It's way bigger than us. San Francisco is a very delicate place and what y'all doing is going to have a lot of repercussions in the future. repercussions in the future. Maybe not for y'all, but for y'all kids and y'all kids' kids.
Thank you. Thank you to the Aptos community at this time. I'd like to call Bridget Early, Chris Garza.
Hello, I'm here advocating for the needs of Everett Middle School. My name is Bridget Early. I'm one of the social workers, and I've been there for 14 years. Over the years, Everett has gone through many transformations, but one thing has remained constant: our school has always been impacted by much larger societal issues, including generational poverty, racism, housing inequities, and budget deficits. We are a school that mirrors the city. The many inequities between our white students and our students of color are shameful and enraging. This is the fuel that lights my fire every day to do this work, and there's so much work we have to do. I am here to say that our children need us to fight for them, not against each other. Please help us come together as a community to fight for what our students need. Yes, our students need safety and predictability and mental health support and consistent valued teachers. And yes, our way forward is through love, advocacy, listening, understanding, and by keeping our amazing teachers and recruiting more teachers as staff who want, and staff who want to see what is possible at Everett. I invite all the reporters, parents, colleagues, former and current, to do what we all want to help our Everett Owls rise.
Good evening. My name is Chris Garza, and I'm a longtime educator and proud to say that I work at Everett Middle School. Given the media coverage, I wanted to come here tonight to say that I love our Everett community, our passionate school staff, and our incredible students with all their amazing middle school quirkiness. The story that's been told recently is not just a story about us. It's also a story about how our community will respond to us in schools like ours with either open hearts and a commitment to education justice, or with indifference and cynicism about our children's potential. I choose to be at Everett because I believe that all of our students are worthy of respect and dignity and deserve to have a world-class education that is equal to their brilliance. And that means we need our district leadership and community to confront this challenge head-on because our students deserve caring, culturally competent educators, mental health supports, teachers with time to collaborate, and resources to implement restorative practices. Our students show up every day, ready to learn, and all of us need to show up for them.
I'd like to call William Klingelhofer, Rex Ridgway, Supriya Ray, Gregory Arneus, and Nadia Molf. Go ahead, one minute, please.
Hello, my name is William Klingelhofer. I'm a San Francisco resident since 1980. My three children are grown now but went to San Francisco schools. I'm here to talk about the bungalow classrooms taking up space in the playgrounds of elementary schools. I remember when bungalows were hastily constructed at elementary schools during the administration of Governor Pete Wilson in order to deal with high enrollment by reducing class sizes. This makes the bungalows about 30 years old. I've been reading that currently enrollment is down. So if enrollment is down, wouldn't it be possible to remove the bungalows and open up the playgrounds for the kids? You could deal with reduced enrollment by doing something positive. The kids would have more space to run and play at recess. That would make the teachers and parents happy, and the schools would look better, and you, the school board, would get to be the good guys. So I ask you to please consider removing the bungalows at Lake Shore School, at Lawton School, and Jefferson, and all schools' bungalows be removed all over the city and all playgrounds be reopened to their original sizes for the benefit of all. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I wanted to know for Rex Ridgway and Supriya, you're actually agenda item D, so, no?
Well, I'm agenda item D1, but I also put in for public speaking on item L3. So my card should say L3.
Okay, if you're, Mr. Ridgway, if you're giving a public comment on non-agenda items, please go ahead.
No, I'm good. Thank you. I just want to make sure that my L3 is the...
Oh, I see, you're L3.
Right, that's an agenda item. That's coming up later.
Got it, yes.
Okay.
So that'll be later. I will call you up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Supriya, go ahead.
Hi, yes. My name is Supriya Ray. I'm not speaking about outdoor learning now, I will later. I'm speaking about Everett Middle School. And I am here both because I have been at various meetings at Everett and because I've specifically been asked to make a comment on behalf of Deonira Calorano, who is the leader of a group of Latinx moms at Everett Middle School. She has asked me to request that her, that their Latino advocacy parent group be recognized and respected. And she has also, you know, I'm also expressing views that we both have based on our meetings and so forth and what we've observed. At Everett, we've seen teachers assaulted, stalked. We've seen students beaten, one to the point of hospitalization. Latinx students, especially the newcomers, have been hit the hardest, and parents have been disregarded and dismissed repeatedly. I want to note that the district talks all the time about health and safety and equity, but what health and safety and equity has been brought to Everett where these conditions prevail? We need to treat this situation as the crisis that it is and do something for these students now. The board and district managed to do something for the students at BVHM. Why not Everett?
I am Gregory Arneus. I understand that enrollment is down and that staffing must be adjusted to match enrollment. However, it does not make sense to cut classrooms at schools that receive many applicants for each spot. These are the schools families want to send their children to. Cutting these classrooms is going to drive more students out of the district, making the budget deficit worse. This action is completely counterproductive. The district has also refused to explain the rationale behind these decisions, instead stating that it is a complicated math problem. This isn't an invasion, not an answer, and it's unacceptable in a district that professes to desire authentic engagement with families. We are, we are in fact, smart enough to understand.
Hi, my name is Nadia Mufti, and I've been teaching at Mission High for six years. My comment is regarding the many ongoing payroll fiascos this year. After a housing situation during the pandemic stripped my savings, I was not prepared to owe thousands of dollars in taxes this year due to the district's bungling of our withholdings. Every year I get a refund, so this caught me completely off guard. I've had to sign up to teach summer school in addition to two other jobs, even though I'm completely burnt out after this year, because there is no way that I can be sure that there won't be another mistake by the district in the future. I am one of many teachers in this predicament. It's disrespectful to have to teach in an increasingly difficult environment while simultaneously worrying about the most basic component of any job being paid for the work that we do. It has been impossible for myself and every colleague that I've spoken to to understand or accurately read our new pay steps through Empower. The combination of unequal amounts of deferred net pay, the mistakes in tax withholdings, new tax brackets due to the DNP for some, and the overpaying and underpaying of people's paychecks make it impossible to know what a correct paycheck looks like. This needs to be fixed, or more teachers are going to leave.
I'd like to call up our next grouping of educators, our speakers. I believe Madison spoke, right? Madison? Katie Van Sant? Chris Claus? Kaylee Yoshi-Spiegelman? Carl Searo Ochi? Darcy Chan Blackburn? Emilia Tarrani? David Ko? Sarita Loving? Allison White? I'd like to have President, UESF President Cassandra Correll as well.
Good evening. My name's Katie Van Sant, and I have two children at Hoover. One will be at Mission next year. And I'm also a child of a teacher, and I remember growing up, and when summer came around, I was always so glad to have some attention from my mom. Because during the school year, all of her attention and all of her focus had to go to the kids and to her classroom. She would get home late every night and be up early grading papers before I got up every morning. And I also remember the end of the summer when money was running out because our, that district had the 10-month schedule, and all of us teacher kids had to wait to get new clothes for school. We had to cut, tighten the belt at the end of the summer. And so I'm here to support the union's proposal to move the November payment up to July and also to add an extra payment from the rainy day budget, because there's no reason for teachers to have to live like that through the summer. There's no reason for teachers to have to figure out, try and figure out how they're going to pay their rent and how they're going to help their kids through the summer when they work so hard all year long. They're the hardest-working people that I know. And I've grown up around a lot of teachers, and I have a lot of friends who are teachers now. I decided not to be a teacher because it seemed too hard for me. And so I, I, they need the summer to replenish and to recharge so they can be there again for the students in the fall. And so that's why I'm here to support moving the November payment and also adding an extra payment, because there's no one who deserves that more than the teachers.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Yoshi-Spiegelman. I'm also combining my time with Carl Searo Ochi. Carl Searo Ochi has been an educator in SFUSD for 34 years, and he just wanted to emphasize that what is happening with the payroll debacle and Empower is not normal. He hasn't seen anything even close like this in his over 30 years of being a teacher. He sees other teachers, particularly first-year teachers and new-year, very new teachers, using their non-duty prep to pore over their paychecks. This is directly hurting students if teachers aren't able to freely use their prep for their jobs. They're using it to try to get paid. I do appreciate that some district representatives came to Wash last week on Tuesday. We had very little notice. I think it was just because they knew 30 teachers were going to take a sick, or personal leave day the next day. We had very little notice. Even so, there was a long line. Some teachers didn't get helped. But Wash, being the squeaky wheel, we shouldn't be the only ones who get support. There should be district representatives being sent to every single site, because these issues are across the board, not just at Wash. So please move the November 2K toward July paycheck. Please also provide educators with a DNP stipend from the Rainy Day Fund. Thank you.
Evening. I am Darcy Chan Blackburn. I teach first grade at Sheridan Elementary School. I'm asking you all once again to make things right for the educators who are going to have significantly smaller paychecks this July. They would be facing an income of about one-third the amount expected. So educators, I know, and you've heard some of them here, are having to go into debt to take planned vacations or choose to cancel those plans. Many will be scrambling or have scrambled for summer jobs so that they can pay bills and put food on the table. All this occurring during the summer when we need the time to recharge and prepare ourselves for next year's teaching. You know how hard we've all worked during the pandemic and how hard we've worked to bring our students back to in-person learning. You also realize how our children have been impacted by the challenges of this pandemic and continue to need more support to overcome those challenges. You must also recognize the importance of keeping a strong, stable, experienced, and dedicated workforce of educators to meet the many needs of our children. We love and care for our students. Show us you care by making this right. SFUSD-
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Good evening. My name is Erin. I'm a teacher at June Jordan. This is my 17th year as an educator. I'm also from San Francisco and a mom of a public school graduate. I'm here again to just talk about the Empower issue. I personally have to pay $6,000, and I know I'm not the only one that has to pay a high tax return. Also, the fact that, like, growing up in San Francisco around a lot of teachers and communities and protests and organizing, I don't ever remember having to go to a protest where asking to save our central office workers. It's always our teachers, our social workers, our nurses. And I had something else to say, but that was just dawning on me. So, and also what Aptos said tonight is like, really, really true to the heart, like how much they will be losing by losing a counselor. That's not a job that you can just make up. So I'm here to say, yeah, it's definitely raining. We definitely have the money, and we're spending a lot of our hours trying to figure out how to read this paycheck. I'm not an accountant.
Hello, my name is David Ko, proud SFUSD student from K through 12 and proud educator for the last 17 years. In the last three months, I've provided, I don't know how many hours of peer support trying to help my colleagues understand their pay, and every single person that I look at has their own unique variety of issues. Within the past week, I have found colleagues who are not being paid for the correct number of steps. Yesterday, I found an educator who their pre-tax Muni deductions were doubled randomly for some of the months. Earlier today, I had spoke with another colleague who did not have California taxes taken out of their April paycheck and who was given the wrong amount for our emergency classroom coverage. These are not known problems that are being addressed. They are ongoing problems that are newly being created and/or discovered. Even if none of this was the case, we would still have a catastrophic financial shortfall in July. With this context, it is necessary that the July paycheck be the same size as the other paychecks by whatever means necessary.
Hey, y'all. My name is Amelia. I've been sitting here watching committed educators work overtime while they beg for the tools they need to support their students, such as counselors and their promised wages. Your daily choice to commit, continue committing wage theft is hurting teachers now, students now, and our future community, since I'm not sure how you expect folks to want to have you as their employer in the future, no matter how much we love our students. Your actions are destroying public education, and we won't do that. You need to stop committing wage theft.
Hi, my name is Allison White. I've taught at Mission High School for 10 years. I'm here to express my outrage at the district personnel responsible for urinating $14 million down the drain on the new payroll system erroneously named Empower. SFUSD failed to pay teachers and staff, made us become forensic accountants, forcing us to forego lesson planning, grading, phone calls home, self-care and self-preservation practices, time with our families only for SFUSD to bounce paychecks when issuing corrected checks and gave no explanation for why. Teachers and staff are showing up to dentist appointments and the pharmacy, learning that they're uninsured because you have taken our policies out of our deductions and not made those payments to our insurance companies. Speaking of which, we are facing huge budget cuts, and Mission Local reported that you all spent 30, excuse me, $300,000 in February just trying to repair these issues. That money is being cut from our sites. This is class warfare. What you are doing is violence, and we will fight back. What you are doing is violence to create this kind of-
Hi, I'm Chris Claus, and my name got called, so I'm back up here for my own time now. In the lobby of 555 Franklin, there's a sign about promises to students and families. One of the promises is that there will be educators in the classroom for them, that there will be supplies for their students to use in school, that the people who work with those students will be able to do that job without having to sacrifice their time, their energy, and their emotional well-being because of payroll issues. That time that we have had to spend on this has hurt our ability to serve our students, and you have broken your promise, not just to us as employer, to employee, but to the students and the families that you serve. Thank you for ignoring the email that invited you all to our action last week. I appreciate it. Thank you for ignoring that for so long that these issues became so big. Because now, we finally broken, and we're sharing the issues with you. Fulfill your promises. Make it right. Fulfill your promises. Make it right.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Cassandra Curry. I'm the president of United Educators of San Francisco. You've heard a whole litany, a whole litany of items that need to be made right. Quite a lot. That term is needed in every single school site. And we understand that we are going to be hearing about and hearing from you all as decisions about what actions are actually going to be taken. Not one single solution is going to operate as the solitary answer for this. There are so many problems that require ongoing, consistent, and concerted effort each and every day to make sure that this problem does not follow us into another academic school year, does not follow us into another fiscal year for that matter. The one before you tonight, you've heard from educators across the district, both in your emails, here physically, and we've been bringing this up since January, when the first issue became aware that this was maybe far larger than just a small snafu of a new implementation of a system. And educators are inherently extremely patient people. Extremely patient people. So it is true that what you're hearing tonight, what you've seen in your emails and the exasperation of folks is coming down on the line of an extremely hard school year that has never occurred before in the history of current public education. We're dealing with an ongoing pandemic, increased mental health services that have been increasing year over year, starting much of this before the pandemic even came into place. We understand that there is a budget shortfall that is projected and all of that is happening at the same time that folks need to pay bills. They need food on the table and they need to make rent. That being said, your rainy day fund has funds in it. We watched that occur in the fall. We watched as budget decisions were made and that there is funds on hand. In addition to, let me just state that it would be UESF members who would be giving to themselves by moving the $2,000 stipend to July. That is already allocated as our money. It would be us making sure that we know our folks are good or could maybe make ends meet in July. And so that certainly is something we're willing to do. We want to make sure that especially our newest, most vulnerable teachers who are struggling to find housing. They struggle just to pay rent even in shared housing conditions. Right? That those folks are the folks that aren't going to be able to buy groceries. I've lived off of $20 a month eating ramen in my first few months as an educator because of how little it was that my paycheck and how much food and cost of living is in San Francisco. And that is not the quality of care that you all have, that is not the quality of care that we want for our educators. So making sure that that solution is recognized for what it is, that would be the members moving our own planned money to that space. What is additionally needed for you to decide tonight is the amount of compensation in addition to that in order to make sure that folks are made right. No one planned for this. We had no idea. And it's now in your hands and we look forward to hearing what the outcome of that is. And of course, we will be back again to make sure that this is all happening each and every month in the way that it's supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you. We have now had 45 minutes of public comment. We will now go to our virtual public comments. Mr. Steele?
Yes, we currently have 13 hands raised. President Lam?
Okay, I will extend it to hearing from the 13 virtual hands.
Okay.
And after the 13, I will conclude public comment for non-agenda items.
Thank you. Rianda?
Good evening, Board Commissioners. Sorry, Superintendent Matthews, Deputy Superintendent Portmorteale, everybody in attendance and everybody on Zoom. I'm speaking tonight as one of the APEC parent leaders, but specifically as a mom of four brilliant, beautiful black babies. The principal at Yuloa specifically is not or failing to acknowledge her use of the N-word and the harm that it has caused. We all know that when our babies are in stressful environments, cortisol increases in their brains and they're unable to learn. If we say that we care about the achievement of our black babies, then it is time for us to put our money where our mouth is and remove educators and teachers who are causing harms to our babies. I understand that action was taken, but if that individual still refuses to even acknowledge the harm and issue a public apology, then that is an individual who does not deserve to be setting the tone as the administrator for any of our students. It is time now that we take action and show our babies that they matter, that they care, and we are here as adults to support, love, and care on them. We need to have this administrator moved immediately. And it doesn't matter if there's just one black baby in that school. All of our babies deserve that support and care and acknowledgement to know that their learning and their overall mental health is important and they matter. So please, remove this administrator immediately. Thank you.
Mary?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Mary Lahori. I'm a parent of two girls. And I'm also a member of the APEC leadership as well as the APEC at Yuloa. I'm disheartened and saddened by all the things that I'm hearing about as it relates to black students and families. I think about Lowell and the admissions process, the lack of support at Everett. I'm also speaking as a concerned parent at Yuloa. And I wanted to bring up and make sure that this was discussed from our ongoing concerns and demands sent to SFUSD on March 23rd regarding the principal and the use of the explicit N-word and the complicity of the Lowell staff for not speaking up. While we appreciate the support and correspondence and meetings with Dr. Matthews, Dr. Gibson, the NAACP, Lee, and APEC leadership, and some of the members of the Board of Ed, we are concerned that the principal has made minimal effort to make things right, to own the wrong she has done publicly with the Yuloa community and created roadblocks to prevent her staff from participating in the anti-racist work and restorative conversations members of our APEC. Evidence, rec observation members for the Yuloa APEC. I'm only going to highlight one big thing and this directly impacted our students. The principal held two community circles with our fifth graders. Again, these fifth graders overheard the principal use the N-word. Exclusively the N-word. Students felt about the use of the N-word. She did not apologize. She did not apologize to the students. And it was so disheartening because it wasn't till our students told their parent and that Dr. Matthews show up.
Thank you, Mary. Ms. Marshall?
Good evening. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. Good evening. On behalf of the NAACP and the Lives of Black educators, I have several heartbreaking issues to share in one minute. Number one, the use of the N-word is always inappropriate. I'm very, we were very disheartened to learn that after a meeting with Dr. Gibson, Dr. McRae, the Union, the Administrators Union, the APEC, and the NAACP, that this principal still has not apologized. That she has harmed this young male student for life. She needs to be moved immediately. She should not be allowed to enter the Yuloa school tomorrow. I want to thank the Deputy Superintendent of Policy and Operations' dedication to SFUSD. He's not solely to blame for this paid debacle. Every staff deserves to be paid on time. So Deputy Superintendent of Policy and Operations, thank you so much. You are not alone in this mess and you should not be blamed for it. Look at my notes because I'm so upset about the issue here. The pay issue has to be done. N-word is always inappropriate. Please remove this principal tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Lucas?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Lucas Yan and I'm a seventh grader at Aptos Middle School. And today I heard that our band program is being completely cut next year. And honestly, I'm really upset about this because music band has been one of my favorite classes. And not only has it made me grow my trumpet skills, but also allowed me to make friends. I don't think that it's fair that you should have to have money to learn an instrument outside of school when you should be able to learn it in school. I do think that the school district should provide this opportunity for everyone. And also, our counselors are really important in supporting students so that we can all have good environments for learning in the classroom. So just please don't cut these positions. They're really important to me and the school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lucas. Adam and Lex?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Lex Dietz-McChain and our son has been a kindergarten student at Leonard Flynn Elementary this past year. I can say without hesitation that his teacher, who has been given notice non-relection, is the most compassionate and dedicated teacher I have ever met. And I am so grateful for all she has done for my son. My son has a neurodiversity and not only has she been a beacon of stability for him, she has managed to turn his challenges into strengths, to be celebrated and be proud of. She continuously ensures that every child in the room feels special, confident, and bright. And she does it so authentically that every single parent can feel the love that she has for these children. She doesn't just teach a class. She formed a community, which was no easy feat with all the restrictions this past year. As our city struggles with attracting and retaining quality educators and at a time when the general faith in San Francisco's public school system is dire, I challenge the school board to please reconsider the decision of the non-relection. She would be a monumental loss for SFUSD. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea, I will need to promote you to panelist and we'll be able to see your camera in order for you to talk. So I'm promoting you now and we will be able to see you. Chelsea?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Thank you for your time. I'm here to talk on behalf of the-
Chelsea? Can you speak up, please? We're not able to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm speaking on behalf of the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Early Education Program. The toddler class provides services for children ages zero to three years old. It is connected with Early Start. It receives funding from the county and the state. But SFUSD has decided to cut this program to close the classroom. We don't know what they're doing with the money. We don't know where these children are going to receive the services they desperately need. These children are born deaf or are hard of hearing. They need devices. They need speech therapy, but they also need a language-rich intensive program that this district has historically provided. This is a very special issue to me. I have three children, two of which are SFUSD students at Clara Lilienthal, and my kindergartner went through this toddler program. She would not be in general education without that support. Please do not close it.
All right, but we're gonna, how much longer do you need? I'll just finish that up.
That's it. That's all I need to say.
Thank you. Leonard Flynn, PTA?
Hi, my name is Alexis Johansson-Williams. And I have two daughters at Leonard Flynn in kindergarten and fourth grade. I'm here to speak in support of the Spanish immersion kindergarten teacher at Flynn. She's been a great teacher to her kindergarten class. This is a school year that has followed a year of isolation and distance learning that has left many students, families, and teachers traumatized. She came into this atmosphere, her first year teaching kindergarten, and has fostered learning and love of learning for my daughter and other students. She's been accessible to both Spanish and English-speaking families and has empowered families to support learning at home. After hearing all the other speakers from the schools at San Francisco Unified, I'm even more impressed by her love of teaching and her desire to continue teaching in the district. We need to support her and all of our teachers, especially teachers of color and bilingual and bicultural teachers. Please do not accept the Flynn administration non-relect for this teacher.
Thank you. Erin? Erin Weiss?
Unmuted Haba, but was it a mistake?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Haba.
Okay. The first thing is, I just wanted to ask regarding Empower, if the $300,000 budget is still $300,000? And if that could be addressed at some point, when you present kind of where you're at and what is needed. I believe that some form of a report or something is going to be happening. The second thing is, I want to second what the other parent spoke about. Multiple parents have reached out to the CAC regarding the Hard of Hearing program that has been closed. I recognize that typically SFUSD does not provide services for under three years old. However, as indicated, this program has existed. And from what I understand, the parents were notified in May that they would no longer have this option as of the fall. And so my ask is that the district reaches out and tries to facilitate additional resources, communication as to what happened. Just anything to help these families. That's what I'd like to ask. I've heard from many families that are very, very, very concerned right now. And then finally, once again, I'd like to ask, at some point, I guess in the fall, that the district addresses in general BOE meetings, learning laws, as well as the new literacy agenda from the audit that came forth. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Haba.
Hello?
Erin?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Erin Weiss. I'm a teacher at rooftop K through eight. I'm calling tonight. I just found out just this evening about a teacher we have who is on the non-relect list. He's a passionate teacher who has unfortunately given this non-relect status. He was a parent and a coach in the district and has worked his way up through this. He's navigated a very challenging life and has improved every year. This is related to credentialing. I asked the district to consider some grace that we have been providing many students and many people over the pandemic. This is a real district of shortage of people like this teacher. He's a male person of color who's connected with many of our students who have struggled the most in this past couple of years. I think it would be a real loss to the district to lose this teacher and what he contributes to the district. Also, just closed by saying my paycheck was $4,000 short and I still have not received an email confirmation back from the payroll specialist who's supposed to be contacting me and is now the 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi, yes, my wife and I are both special education teachers in the district. We have a kindergartner in the district. I just want to quickly appreciate all the teachers, but also all the school staff. I think it should be called school staff appreciation, should we, or staff appreciation? This goes out to all the parents, the security guards, secretaries, custodians, you know, those are all the people who run a school. And I've said it many times and you've heard all the issues that are going on with school staff. Please, not just the board members, I would urge you to come to my school. I work at Dolores Huerta. I'll greet you and say hi and show you around and, you know, say what's working at our school and what can be improved. District staff, you're welcome to come as well. I've said that many times. But I think if you go to the schools, you'll see what's working, what's not. And not just about the payroll, but also about systems or things that we can share, but also you get to, when you come to the schools, people see that and we feel that. And we see that you care because otherwise it's just talk. So please, give us some action. Thanks.
Thank you. Iris? Iris B? Iris B?
Hi, yeah, my name is Carlos. I'm a parent of a child that is hard of hearing and I'm here to speak on behalf of the early start programming procedure. Again, as mentioned earlier by another parent, this is a huge mistake on the side of the education panel to cut funding for that service. The eighteen month to three-year period for a child is critical for their development. If you cut funding to help them during that time, actually the financial burden on the system is gonna be much greater when they go get older and they need more services that they may not need if they get early services right on time. And they learn the way to be part of the general education program as opposed to needing special services throughout their life at the, um, school system. Please reconsider funding the early education program for the kids, Daniela. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Carney? Anna Carney?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I'm from George Washington High School and I'm a music teacher. And I don't know if you realize that there is an arts equity resolution that the Board of Education created itself. And closing a band program is completely against your own resolution. And, uh, you know, there are many other, I wrote to you, I, I, I gave you a real clear rundown on what the issues were around arts education and how how important it was. And I know you guys know that it's important. And there have been many movements to, uh, im- you know, to increase the amount of arts. There's P funding. So I, I don't really understand why a band program is being cut. Alright, that's one. And I really think that you should reconsider that because our music programs are really crucial throughout the entire district. Hundreds and hundreds, and we just had a choral festival. There were like four hundred kids there, three, four hundred kids there, just choral alone. Think about the impact on hundreds of students that you're making by cutting music programs. Second of all, unprofessional. You want us to get all kinds of credentials and, and, and be ready for our jobs? And yet we don't get the money to be, we don't get paid. It's very unprofessional from your end. And you really need to make that right because, you know, in profession, you, you for their work and this debacle, inexcusable. Thirteen million dollars or whatever you spent on empower was a waste of money. You really need to fix this soon. So those are my two issues. Please consider.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Jennifer?
Alright, um, I'm calling because I am frustrated first. I do not want to call in to begin.
I'm sorry, Jennifer, we cannot hear you.
But, um, I get out of school at three forty-five. Now, it is impossible for me to get down there. Remember, small family. I can't imagine what it's like. Can you? Hear me?
Yeah, Jennifer, you're, you're cutting out. We can't hear you.
I can't imagine what it's like for families. I'm also hi, I'm really frustrated that someone
That concludes public comment.
Thank you to the public for providing public comment tonight. I will now move to public comment for SFUSD students. We will hear from SFUSD students who wish to speak on any matters. Students will have up to two minutes to speak. Um, and we will dedicate up to fifteen minutes of general public comment.
If you are a student and you wish to speak, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Again, this is a time for students to speak. Tate?
Hello, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, Kate, this is a time for students to speak?
Uh, yes, I'm a student at George Washington High School.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to ask, uh, why our school was being bunched into a graduation ceremony with two other schools at Kesar Stadium? When for the last eighty or so years, our school has been, uh, holding the ceremony at the stadium itself and with us being moved to Kesar Stadium, the families are being, students are being limited to six, uh, family members per per student. And I find it just very difficult for the students who are bringing a lot of family members. And also I feel like it's kind of a, a throwing away of tradition at, at our school.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this evening on non-agenda items. We will now move into agenda item E. Advisory committee reports and appointments. First presentation is by the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee on Recommendations to Improve Transparency and Bond Program. I'd like to call upon Head of Facilities, Don Komenoffin.
Commissioners, good evening. Uh, I wanted to, really today, this presentation is from our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, so wanted to just introduce Rex Ridgway, who is our, um, acting chair, interim chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. We have been meeting, um, throughout the summer, actually on a bi-weekly basis through the summer and early fall, uh, with the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And since, uh, early fall, we have actually been on a, a monthly meeting and managed to maintain quorum during that whole time. I really wanna commend, uh, the CBOC for, uh, embracing, enthusiastically embracing, uh, pretty significant workload and a set of tasks around both coming up to speed on a complex bond program. And then also tackling the backlog of audits and, um, work that needed to be done. And we met, uh, quite intensively. Um, and Commissioner Xu, wanna thank her for her leadership as Chair of CBOC for most of that time. And really driving a very productive conversation about the ways that the SFUSD facilities program, which as you'll hear later tonight as we go on the audits, um, is fundamentally a well-run program, but also mysterious, right? That we have a lot of work to, to do to, I think, make, uh, the work that we're doing more transparent and easily accessible to the public. And we've heard a lot of good recommendations from CBOC. We are in agreement with the recommendations that you will hear tonight about communications and our website and uh, the need for enhanced reporting and have actually made, um, significant strides even just the past six weeks. Largely, I wanna recognize she couldn't be here tonight due to the efforts of the Senior Barry, our brand new program manager who started about two and a half months ago. And she has also really embraced the feedback that CBOC has provided. So with that, I'm going to, uh, turn the presentation over to Mr. Ridgway, um, and welcome your comments and his feedback.
And Mr. Ridgway, before you begin, I just wanted to note to our present, presenters tonight for committee reports, it will be, um, up to ten minutes of presentation time. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I didn't expect this, even to get here this late. I, I expected five fifteen, I would be on. So I, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, the, the slide presentation, if you'll notice, everyone, uh, the date is approved by CBOC October sixth, twenty twenty-one. That approval was, was the date that Ann Sue, who is now one of your colleagues, was actually the Chair of CBOC. Uh, I was a, a vice chair. Oh, keep it there, please. Uh, okay, thank you. Now, it's significant for that date because this same slideshow, which is fourteen slides, was presented by Ann Sue to this uh, Board of Education, uh, on that date, when she, again, she was the, uh, chi- chairperson, okay? Keep the date, I'll, I'll, I'll connect the slides in a second. The same presentation of these fourteen slides was presented to the Building and Grounds Committee in February. Again, Ann Sue presented these fourteen slides as Chair of CBOC. When she was appointed to the Board of Education, of course, she had to leave that position. And now I am interim chair, sitting in her, in her seat, okay? Um, so now it is May tenth and I am gonna make the presentation. Now, a footnote, uh, I was not consulted, uh, at all about these slides or what to put in or anything. I didn't even know that this agenda item was on the agenda until Friday. Okay, so with that exception, and I thought I should have been at least no text, no phone, no nothing. Ask the Rex. You're, you're on, the presentation for CBOC will happen today. I didn't even know until Friday. Okay, so therefore with that, uh, uh, qualification, uh, I, I wanna proceed. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so this is a quick background. Again, it's saved for perhaps, uh, two of the board members. You've seen this slide. This is a recap on background. Proposition thirty-nine puts us in play. Okay, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, Executive Vice President of, of my high, uh, Lin- Lincoln High School's PTA. Ann Sue is President of Galio PTA. So I have no shade to throw at PTAs. But the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee is not an advisory committee and it's not a PTA. And I'm a, I'm, I'm a PTA person, so no shade there, nor is it a school site council, which by law has, every school has to have a school site council. Prop thirty-nine was put into play in two thousand nineteen, okay? It is a state law. We are separate and independent, okay? Uh, we've had a CBOC all the way up in two thousand eighteen. It dissolved, termed out. And there were no CBOC operating for almost three years until our CBOC is in play now. Um, next slide. Okay, uh, let's go to the next slide, please. I'm not gonna cover every single slide. Next slide, please. Okay, now, this slide here is important because what we're, we're, what you guys need to know, uh, ladies and gentlemen of, of the school board, is what's going on with the bond money? Seven hundred forty-four million dollars is voted by the, uh, citizens, taxpayers of this, this city, uh, who are paying for these bonds. These bonds are not collateralized. They have no backup. Uh, the, the full faith and, and, and credit, if you will, of the San Francisco residents who are taxpayer, property owners are paying for these bonds. So they, so we are, uh, uh, in play to make sure that everything going on with how this, this money is spent, where it goes, what, why and for, that's our job. We are independent, okay? Uh, what, uh, so I wanna go to where we are. When we started the CBOC that was, uh, voted in, in, um, June, our first meeting was in June, we spent June, July, and August meeting every two weeks to catch up. We spent all of that time catching up with, uh, financials that were never ever looked at. Why? Because there was no CBOC for three years. Okay, now we've finally got a, a CBOC in play and we spent mo- all the summer basically into the fall, finally catching up. Now, uh, we are, we have approved, uh, twenty-two, uh, twenty seventeen, eighteen, and twenty eighteen, nineteen financials with, uh, Don Caliban Nathan will be presenting later on, uh, I think this is probably after me, uh, that those have been looked at, blessed, approved, and we're done with those. Now, where we are now, we are at this moment, uh, on a pending approval of the audit for twenty twenty. That's where we are now. Footnote, we have not at all received anything on twenty twenty-one. Okay, here it is, twenty twenty-two. Where is twenty twenty-one? Now, this, this, let me say, I, I, you know, I'm getting kinda amped up, but, but then let me say, you don't wanna hear what I want you to tell. You wanna hear what you need to know. And that's my job. You need to know things and you don't wanna just let me tell you something, oh, it sounds good, it looks good. These are the hard facts, okay? As of our last CBOC meeting, which was last Wednesday, uh, there was an invitation to, uh, Dr. Matthews to attend it. Uh, scheduling conflicts, I'm sure that's the reason why. We've also submitted that, uh, 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 a, a letter from me to, to uh, President Jenny Lamb. Again, you guys are busy. I, I get that. So, so I'm not gonna throw shade there. But it's important that, this is so important that, that down the road, uh, the Don, uh, Calvin Nathan, her department is gonna be looking to, to, to offer a one billion, I don't know what the number is, I'm gonna say I heard one billion dollar bond. And it's been pushed back rightly, so I, I think it was wise to push that back to November twenty, uh, to November twenty twenty-three. So there's time to, to get it right. But remember, the taxpayers of this city voters are going to have to, uh, warm up to that. And they need to know that this bond that was floated in two thousand sixteen, the seven hundred forty-four billion dollars, was, was dealt with righteously, openly. Everything was disclosed. And remember, this is a city where thirty percent of the parents have put their kids in private schools. Think about that. You don't go into a private school unless you have means or you go, or you can borrow the money or what have you. Thirty percent of San Francisco parents have put their kids in private schools compared to nine percent.
Sorry, this is the interpreter. Can you please slow down?
Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry.
No worries. Thank you.
Um, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ridgway, I also just wanna acknowledge your time. Um, just wanna make sure that we get to covering the recommendations.
Alright, so, so where, so where, so where we are is that, um, and this is a major, is a major impasse. The, George Washington Murals has been a problem with, uh, getting information for our CBOC to report to you and by extension the public of how much money the, uh, bond monies were used from the two thousand sixteen bond monies that were paid to the Remedy Moss Manley LLP Law Firm. Uh, when Ann Sue was Chair, uh, we wrote a letter to, um, the bond program. That letter was dated Mar- March eighteenth. We had, we got a response, March twenty-eighth. Then I sent a letter to, uh, Mr., uh, Dr. Matthews and copied the board on, uh, on my position as interim chair as ha- as what we need to go forward in, in, in our position as that we don't agree with that. At last week's CBOC meeting, we were going to vote on, uh, that being the position of the CBOC committee. We ran out of time and reason that we ran out of time is because one of my colleagues said, Rex, why, why don't you put a pause on this and see if you can meet with Dr. Matthews one-on-one? Friday morning at seven thirty, I sent a letter to Dr. Matthews asking him to meet with me, one-on-one. He set the conditions, the time and the circumstances of how he wants to meet. I'm still waiting for that reply. And, and that, I get that. Everybody's busy. We're all trying to do the work. But here's the problem, the challenge. We cannot approve the audit twenty twenty, twenty twenty unless we know how much money has been expended. Now, regardless, the question of whether it's appropriate, this, to pay a law firm to defend the school district in a lawsuit using bond money, I don't even wanna go there anymore. I'm tired of that. What we need to do is find out how much was paid. And until that happens, there is not gonna be an approval of the twenty twenty audit. This is serious business. Since we're talking about twenty twenty-three, a billion dollars? And we can't even tell the citizens of San Francisco, what thirty percent of them, kids don't even go to this school, are gonna be the taxpaying property owners who are paying on this bond? This is a serious matter. Uh, I don't need to belabor the point. Everybody should get the gravitas of this. Everyone, okay? Uh, next slide, please. And I'm wrapping up. Uh, let's go. Next slide. Okay, now, one of the things that was put, put, uh, tonight, and I'll just ru- run through these, were different graphics of, of, a better way of, uh, the, the average person can go into CBOC's website, take a look at what's, what's going on. Uh, some, some of these slides are examples of, uh, Long Beach. Uh, and again, you got, everyone can read here, so I don't need to, to take valuable time, cause I wanna hear questions, public comments, whatever the case may be. Next slide, please. Okay, now, this is an example, again, of, of schools. These are not our schools, mind you, because we have not done this. One of the things, the reason why our website, CBOC, is not as beautiful as this, is because we just haven't had the time. Re- remember, we went three years without a CBOC. We spent all summer and fall trying to catch up on the financials. The hard, roll-up-your-sleeve work. But this is where we wanna go, go with. Next slide, please. Thank you. Uh, these columns here are beautiful. This is how an average person can see a, see a school site, um, uh, what's been done, uh, committed to, the finished product, and it's the type of, of visual that will encourage people not only to look at it, but be comfortable with, okay, I, I understand this. Right now, we're, again, we're not there. This is, this is aspiration. These same slides, again, were presented last year, October sixth, and to the Building and Grounds Committee, uh, February, uh, of this year. So again, this is a repeat for most of you. Next slide, please. Uh, ne- next slide. We're gonna get into the weeds on this. Again, uh, the graphics, when the visual, visual world, uh, is, it looks better. Uh, you can read it. Uh, again, uh, this is Fremont as an example. This is Fremont's doing. Okay, next slide, please. This is, uh, actually the, uh, o- oversight results of the city and county. This is our own city and counties, uh, website, uh, what they're doing, how they do with their financials. So again, this is what we aspire to the CBOC, the citizens So again, this is what we aspire to the CBAC, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for the school district. Next slide. Okay, again. So it, it speaks for itself. Just another slide, again, where we want, we want to go. Next, next slide, please. Again, our cognizance of time, so I don't want to, all right. This is slide thirteen. Stay here for a second. Former CBAC Transparency Enhancement Committee. Okay, this subcommittee, the CBAC has seven members, okay? Well, six because of Ann Sue is now with you guys, so we, we are still, we're, we're gonna have to replace her, obviously. And one of the things that we're, we're desires of is having a subcommittee to work directly with the staff and the auditor, to deal with them during the interim times where we meet. We only meet once a month now. We used to meet every two weeks, we now meet once a month. So that thirty-day period between time is where our subcommittee will be able to continue to work with Don and Lysinia, the auditor Nathan and others at, at the, at the bond committee, at the bond program committee, the department. Next slide, please. Oh, is that it? Okay, no, 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 no worries. Okay, so as, as we're wrapping this up, one of the things that has not been done, or at least it's, it's been, is, is part of the presentation from the auditor, is something that is a personal thing. I, I'm thinking, if I don't stay on it, it's not gonna get done. Okay, and that is the recommendations from the bond department's own auditors on something that they need to put in play. And it says here that while the district, this is the auditor, this is not, I'm not making this up, I'm reading it right from the audit report. And this is, this is at the end of two thousand twenty, it's now the same one here, I mean, twenty, twenty, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, and now two thousand twenty. This is the same recommendation that your own auditor is asking the bond department to put in play, and it has not been done. While the district approved the, the professional service charge or change orders review, there is no protocol to investigate if this professional error or matter of unforeseen, is unforeseen of the professional service provider. And it goes on to say, here's the recommendation, please listen. The district should define a normal scope of change order classification. It says, except change orders exceeding a defined normal range should trigger an investigation. There is no norm, far, far as I know, there's no normal number or percentage. If a construction project goes over ten percent, is that the threshold? Their own auditors, there is none. It should be established. And it says, the investigation to determine if the professional who made the error is of the change or, what is it, because of unforeseen conditions or change of circumstances. The bond program management should further create a database to monitor the situations where they went beyond the threshold. But there's no threshold, okay? And to make my case of, of, of how that has, has happened, and I'll close on this, I'll read off these schools and tell you how much they've over, went past the final bid. Reading Elementary School, fifteen percent. Marina, fifteen percent. T U L A Elk, fifteen percent. Sheridan went over fourteen percent. Leinthal, twenty-seven percent. And George Washington High School, twenty-six percent. Now, that's after the final bid. So the question is, how do we, how do we do that? Is it just like accepted practice? Every time a school goes over their budget, that's money from the same box. And that box is running out of money right now. And of course, we know that we're looking for approval from you guys. And this is, Calum and Nathan will be talking about this, the hundred and forty-eight million dollars of bond that need to be sold. It was two hundred eighty-four million, but I was reading Moody's. And Moody's said that there, there was a pause because of the change in the amount and change of this, of the structure. So this is a very serious conversation. I hope I covered it. I hope I've captured your attention. Let's get down and do the work and make this thing happen. Because the people of San Francisco are watching this, and in two thousand twenty-three, they have to say yes. Let's, let's get them to say yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway. At this time, before I open up, are there clarifying questions from colleagues? I would like to call up Supriya Ray.
Hello, this is Supriya again. Thank you for taking my comment. There's a couple of things I want to note. First is, I would like to, especially given the transparency and trust issues raised, urge this board and urge the district to very carefully look at how the reallocated bond funding from two thousand sixteen is spent. I don't think we can assume that it will be spent properly or necessarily well, given construction changes, just all kinds of things that are coming up. We need to keep an eye on this money. We owe taxpayers an obligation. I'm one myself, I'm sure many of you are. And it is not right to proceed the way that things have been going the past few years. Second, I wanted to comment specifically on the legal fee issue that was raised. I want to note that the district, as I understand, claimed there was a mental health reason for this entire George Washington mural issue. And it saw fit to pay a law firm some undetermined amount of money. We haven't been able to find out how much. And yet somehow, it has not seen fit or found a way to help many children with many mental health problems, learning loss, and other issues. Like, this reflects something very, very disturbing in our priorities and allocating funds. And in addition, on the subject of the bond expenditure itself for a law firm, no regular voter would consider that appropriate. It's a breach of trust. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to, are there comments? Commissioner Shu?
I want to thank Mr. Ridgeway and thank Ms. Kamala Nathan to present this to us. I was the chair of CBAC when we did all that work last year to understand the program, to get our heads around the audit reports. We did spend a lot of time, and thank you, Don, for spending that time educating us. And thank you, Rex, for working through all of that with me and the rest of the CBAC. The presentation that we went through is a summary of what we would like to see the bond program and the auditors do, which means those recommendations, those points were not there. We did not see them. So we put them and summarized them in this document in the hopes that going forward, if, when the bond program and the auditor implements those recommendations, if the public and the CBAC will be able to see more, as you say, the mystery behind the bond program. So I understand that work is being done so that the, unfortunately, two thousand twenty's audit did not include some of this recommendation. But two thousand twenty-one audits will include. Is that correct, Ms.?
If not directly in the audit as an auxiliary document to address the questions that have been raised.
Thank you. I look forward to, we all look forward to seeing that. And I also urge that the bond program work with the CBAC and really, not just in the letter of what is allowed in the bylaw or the, any other law, but really in the spirit of more transparency to the CBAC and to the public. So, and what I mean is that, you know, maybe by the letter of the law, you don't have to disclose things. But by not disclosing certain things, you're making the public and the CBAC distrust the bond program and therefore the school district some more. And that will harm the school district, and I am now a part of the school district. So I have a vested interest in us passing more bonds in the future for our, our students. So really, I encourage the bond program to work with the CBAC and talk more and get some of those questions answered and really stick to the spirit of transparency.
Thank you, Commissioner Shu. I realize, I'm sorry, I did not call on our virtual participants for public comment. So I'd like to open that up for up to five minutes, please, of public comment.
At this time, we will hear public comment on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee recommendations. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to this item. We'll have a total of five minutes. Each speaker will have one minute. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas tardes. Por favor, levante su mano si desea hacer un comentario público sobre la presentación que tuvimos. Tenemos un total de cinco minutos y solamente es dedicado, dedicado a la presentación. Gracias.
Good morning. If you have a report that you want to express your thoughts on it, you can now raise your hand.
Thank you. Allison.
Hi, Allison Henry, San Francisco Unified Parent and Taxpayer. My comment today is addressing San Francisco Unified's response to the CBAC regarding the murals at George Washington High School. Starting in October 2021, the CBAC made a push to understand the fees paid to Remy Moss's law firm using bond funds. The district response on March 28, 2022, completely neglected their obligation under Proposition 39. It was the exact opposite of transparent. Trust and transparency is at rock bottom. I suggest that you do not think of asking the city to raise more bond funds until you get your house in order, pay your teachers, and follow your legal obligations under Proposition 39. Thank you.
Thank you. Lex.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lex Lefait. I'm a member of the Civic Bond Oversight Committee. I wanted to thank interim Chair Rex Ridgway for presenting tonight and underscore the importance of recruiting new members to the CBAC. Current members are working hard to do right by the responsibilities of the Civic Bond Oversight Committee. They have professional experience in finance, bond financing, and real estate. But moving forward, I personally hope that we can add trusted members within our diverse communities who will do the work of CBAC and build a shared understanding of these very necessary, much-needed, and impactful resources. Bond financing can address the safety needs and physical plant needs of our schools. We have a lot of work to do. This committee has been wonderful to work with, and we could go further faster with more members. We've all been working to recruit members. We understand we have to meet state requirements, and we truly appreciate your support on this urgent matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick.
Patrick. Hi, sorry about that. Hi, this is Patrick Wolf. My comment, I'd really like to underscore what interim Chair Ridgway and also Commissioner Shu was speaking about, the importance of transparency and credibility. I really would urge the district to think of its credibility with the broader community as its greatest asset and not as something that gets in the way. So, for example, the presentation suggested that ordinary residents and taxpayers ought to be able easily to go to our website and see how the bond money is being spent. That seems pretty reasonable, right? You can do that in Long Beach. You cannot do that in San Francisco. For example, disclosure of how money was spent. Ordinary residents and taxpayers would want to know that. It's a way to build credibility, which is extremely valuable for us. We should be eager to earn the credibility of our community, and I urge the district to think in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg.
Hi, Greg Chowsky, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. This is an urgent issue. We have been without a CBAC for three years. Thankfully, we pulled one together, but it was only after a whistleblower pointed that out. Here's my question. Will this board commit to demand that SFUSD collaborate and be forthcoming with the CBAC? It's a very simple question. That, to Patrick's point, is the absolute basis of transparency and trust. Will this board tonight demand SFUSD to disclose everything? Because it's not doing it now, and we just heard that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Tate Schulten.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I wanted to just reiterate what he had said earlier about George Washington's oversight on funding with the construction. And I've seen a lot of their mistakes firsthand. One of them was covering the windows with a wood, and essentially it got wet and it blew through, and it cost the school thousands of dollars to redo all that work. And there's just been multiple mistakes done by the construction crew that was hired throughout the school's renovations. I'd like to bring that to attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller ending in 7853.
Hi, Virginia Marshall. Thank you so much. I want to thank the interim chair for that heartfelt report. However, as a citizen, I'm an educator and a parent. I am really concerned. It looks like you all are not helping help with this new committee. We need to do what we teach our students in kindergarten, to get along and do the work. So the old chair needs to help the new chair. There's a lot of money at stake. We have teachers and parents and all kinds of educators who need to be paid. So the money is there, just work together. When you come back again, we will hear that you all are working together. It looks like you're not, and that is horrible. Our students earn Ds and Fs for not working together. So earn an A. The students are at stake here, earn an A. And then I hope you didn't spend any money on that Washington mural for law fees. I sure hope you did not do that. It sounds like you did. So again, I want to thank the interim chair for a heartfelt report. When you come back again, we want to hear that you all are working together for the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. That concludes public comment. President Liam.
Vice President Bogus.
I was wondering if staff could just address, I guess, the gap between, I guess, the recommendations from the Oversight Committee and kind of, I guess, where staff is as far as either supporting them or not. And I think just trying to get clarity on, I guess, kind of what it is that we are doing versus what we aren't doing based off what's being requested.
Absolutely, Commissioner. So on the question of the George Washington High School murals, I'm going to defer to council. And I do think that that is the main source of disconnect right now between staff and CBAC. On all other items, we've actually, as I said, embraced these recommendations, put in resources to working on our website. We have changed and developed new reporting templates, some of which we have shared, Buildings and Grounds Committee, now as part of our monthly update that we're doing to the committee or for the committee. And that also, we have had some challenges with agenda management within CBAC that we have had around six items that have been repeatedly re-agendized, including discussions that we want to have as staff around. This is our process for getting new CBAC members. Here's the new website and the reports that we've drafted. But because of, I think, attention and, again, frustration with the reporting around the CBAC, sorry, reporting around the George Washington High School murals, we've been unable to kind of move forward on those topics. That being said, that work is here. It is being done. It has been done. I think to the, so around, we were overhauling our reporting. We are overhauling our website. We have much to share. We have heard the recommendations about the audit and whether or not the new audit technically incorporates it into the audit document or whether or not we provide some of that information just as in a wraparound document to make sure the questions are addressed. We are not objecting to any of those issues. I think that, and so I think that's, I think that probably, I think accurately characterizes the conversation so far.
I see Vice President Bogus giving me the head nod. Did you want me to address the issue of the attorney's fees with the murals? So as we advised the board when then-chair Shu, now Commissioner Shu, made the request, the amount of attorney's fees and the line item details are privileged under the attorney-client privilege. And the case law in California is very clear that that is the case. And the reasoning that the courts have used is that even the amounts just have, give insight to the opposing side as to strategy. So once the case is concluded, we will, of course, respond to any records requests from the CBAC or anyone else. But it is still pending, as the board well knows, it's on appeal at the Court of Appeal.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Well, two things I just wanted to respond. Number one, CBAC is not subject to, to my understanding, Records Act requests because we are a state agency, not state agency, a state mandated body that is required to find out what's going on with the bond money. Rex Ridgway himself can't do that. I can't go and get information on a pending lawsuit. However, from my understanding, CBAC as a body can do that. So we're not subject to being blocked out of a Records Request Act. Number two, the fact that on November 5, the letter from the Bond Department told us that Remy Moss's law firm was paid $144,000 from the bond money. In our position, that waives client privilege. You've given it up when you told us that you actually engaged them and paid them money. Now, I will grant you, a pending lawsuit gives you, you know, you still have that going on. But it's, the question is, our question is, how much money is being given to this, paid to this law firm? I'm puzzled as to how can it be even a strategy? But I'm not a lawyer, so I just want to put that out. I'm starting to feel like I'm really getting into your area, and I'm going to get in trouble. But that's our position, so I don't want to get there. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I was wondering if we could, I guess, talk a little bit about the decision-making process of the funds for this particular purpose and just kind of how that fits into it? And is that normal, typical? What was, I guess, the decision-making process on that? And kind of how did we navigate that? I don't know who's the best person to address. I'm just curious as far as, is that a common practice? Is that?
Yeah, I'm looking at Head of Facilities Kamala Nathan because I cannot recall if any of those discussions occurred outside of the presence of council. And I would not want her to waive attorney-client privilege by sharing those conversations here. So I guess my request is if those conversations or decisions happened outside of your conversations with council, then, of course, please answer Vice President Bogus. But otherwise, we would not want to disclose that in an open meeting.
Commissioner, I think I would actually, if I could just respond with a broader comment about the role of CBAC and its mandate. And the role of CBAC is very specifically to determine that expenditures that are made are consistent with overall state law and then also the ordinance that was adopted by voters. George Washington High School is a bond project. And in addition to, the main focus of that bond project is seismic stabilization of a complex building, but also a number of other modernization scopes have worked. It is, again, I'm going to keep reminding folks that in addition to the George Washington High School murals, there is a freeze by John Sergeant Singer, who's, you know, preeminent African-American sculptor in America, and that there are other interesting and notable pieces of artwork at George Washington High School, all of which we have had to carefully address and consider as we deliver that bond project. And so in terms of eligible expenditures, which is the provenance of CBAC, we have already advised CBAC that these are eligible expenditures. And I think that part of the debate, as we have tried to clarify for CBAC around having feedback about what we should spend money on as a district, is a policy decision of the SFUSD Board of Education. And so to the extent that they have feedback on that topic, as many of our stakeholders do, they are free to share it. But within the actual mandate of CBAC, it is a narrow question which they are tasked with answering, a narrow but very important question, which is, have the expenditures that you're reviewing, are they overall consistent with the purposes of the ordinance? And if they have feedback to the contrary, they're free to offer it. But, and that is the extent of the dialogue, I think, on this topic.
I would like to speak up on that. Your question to council, and I think council's right, if this, if the conversation about the use of bond money to deal with the George Washington, was it public conversation? Yes, it was. I can't pin the actual month, but there was conversation that's recorded at a public Board of Education meeting where Ms. Callum and Nathan did speak on options. There was a question asked, what options, or where can money be pulled from to deal with the George Washington mural situation? And one of the options that she gave was the bond money. That was one of, I believe, four options. I wish I knew this question was coming, but that's a fact. So we knew that publicly, so she doesn't have to go into cover from the attorney, that was a public disclosure to her. She's saying, I have options. One of the options is the bond money. So that started this whole thing. What I got involved with, what would make me trigger this whole thing was that on November 5, when we had a four, we had a answer to our question, what entities were paid for George Washington High School? Number three said Remy Moss Manley Law Firm, and it said $144,000, I'm just rounding it up, $144,000 for SEQA and this. And then it ended to respond to legal questions. That's all it said. So I said, what the hell is that? Respond to legal questions? So then I did a deep dive of my own and found out all the documents related to the lawsuit that in October 20, October 19, the George Washington Alumni Association sued about the murals. And then the next month, or I believe, the same year, December 2019, the district hired Remy Moss's law firm. The lawsuit went two years. It was decided in favor of the George Washington Alumni Association in October 2021, two years. So my question is, was bond money spent to pay the legal bills? That's all, that's all I'm asking. Okay, I'm not even disputed if it's okay. The question is, as CBAC, our job is to tell the board and the citizens of San Francisco every dime that was paid for whatever, and that's our position. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further comments. Thank you, Mr. Ridgway. Appreciate your service and your presentation and look forward to continued transparency and reporting back from the CBAC to the board and following through on the recommendations of those audits. Thank you.
And thank you.
At this time, I'd like to have our parent advisory council like to call upon Michelle Jacmanegus. And again, a friendly reminder to our presenters of, please be mindful of the time of 10 minutes, please.
We will be brief. Thank you, President Lamb. Good evening, Commissioners, our student delegates, I believe, are online, staff, superintendents, families, members of the community. Thank you. As you know, the role of the PAC is to represent parent perspectives in order to inform Board of Education policy discussions and decisions. This is our report for May 10, 2022, Board of Education meeting. We will begin with appreciations and asks, touch on concerns and recurring issues, and conclude with information on upcoming family engagement opportunities, including our next PAC meeting. Before I turn it over to PAC member Luz Wayanka, I would like to just appreciate the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee for their work. And I would also like to appreciate all of the students, parents, educators, and others who came out to speak tonight. We wish you didn't have to, and we hope that you have been heard. And now Luz.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. The PAC would like to appreciate President Lamb for both the parity of time allotted for in-person and online public comment tonight and at the April 26, 2022 Board of Education meeting, as well as the extension of time to allow all public commenters to speak. We understand the board's desire to find ways to shorten these oftentimes extremely long meetings. However, we stand firm in our belief that the voices of families and community members is vital to ensuring equity and successful outcomes of our students as well as a well-informed democratic process. Related to this, the PAC would like to hear from the Board of Education about our request, also raised by many during public comment at recent Board of Education meetings, that there be a return to a 6:00 PM start time for all regular Board of Education meetings in order to allow families time to do the things they need to do and still be able to attend, present, or listen into meetings. This is especially critical for the volunteer parent leaders from all of our advisory groups on dates when they present to you. The PAC will also like to receive an update on the status of the queer, trans parent advisory council. We would like to know which commissioner will be sponsoring this effort going forward, what the status is on securing funding for a paid coordinator position, and clarification about eligibility of council members. We know that there has already been interest from family members to apply, but that they are still waiting to hear more information on the process and timeline for application.
Thank you, Luz. Tonight, you heard from folks at Everett Middle School. And the PAC is also very concerned about the recent media coverage regarding the concerns and challenges at Everett. And we are in communication with families and staff in order to better understand the situation, along with what, if anything, we can do to be of support, and we will keep the board updated. We continue to hear from family and community members who are very concerned about the pause in the Equity Audit and Action Planning Committee. At the April 25, 2022 Equity Studies Task Force meeting, it was shared that many of the things spurred the creation of the Equity Audit and Action Planning Committee are still happening. This includes incidences of bullying and racism among students. We strongly encourage the board to be more open in communicating exactly what is happening with this committee, when it can be expected to reconvene, and what the next steps will be. In the absence of information, it is often assumed that nothing is being done and mistruths easily spread. Finally, the PAC would like to express our continued support and solidarity with the educators and staff of SFUSD, whose paychecks have been and continue to be improperly processed, who've had to fight in order to be paid properly and have suffered as a result. We are very concerned about the reports that problems continue to persist and that we are losing educators from our district as a result. And we ask that you seriously consider their asks for summer funds. The Local Control and Accountability Plan, or LCAP, Task Force, is still working to confirm details for a few more events to engage families and community members in providing feedback to inform updates to our current three-year LCAP plan. If folks are interested in learning more about the LCAP and would like to provide input on this plan, please keep an eye out for more information via SFUSD's various communication channels. We just want to acknowledge it's been extra challenging at this time. There's a rise in COVID cases. It's tricky to plan in person, and people are kind of burned out with online. So we're going to do the best that we can, and we're already planning on how to start that process much earlier in the year next year, as well as have a more comprehensive, aligned calendar that includes a lot of different things, like trainings for family members who want to be on-site councils that happen in the fall so that they're prepared when decision-making comes in the spring and that sort of thing. There will be an update tomorrow as well in the LCAP at Wednesday's Budget and Business Services Committee meeting. Executive Director of Budget Services Amory Gordon will present an update. That meeting starts here at 5:00 and can be viewed online. However, I believe public comment can only be made in person. More information is on the board's website, sfusd.edu/board-education. And we will also be sharing some preliminary findings from what we've learned up to that point at the June 1 Budget and Business Services Committee meeting. Luz?
Thanks, Michelle. The PAC rescheduled our May meeting from last Thursday, May 5, 2022, to this Thursday, May 12, 2022, so we do not have a meeting update at this time. We will meet in person from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Eye Lab, located on the lower level of 727 Golden Gate Avenue, which is accessed via an entrance of McAllister Street. PAC meetings are open to the public. All are welcome to attend, and we encourage anyone who is interested to join us. Meetings are conducted in English. Translation and interpretation can be provided with 72 hours' advance notice. Guests at our May meeting will include Commissioner Motamadi, Diana Cavanaro, our representative on the Soda Tax or Sugary Drinks Distributor Tax Advisory Committee, and SFUSD staff working on the revisions to the student assignment system. The PAC is currently recruiting new members for the upcoming school year, and we have, we've received some exciting applicants. If you're curious about the PAC, would like to see firsthand what it's like or have any questions about what it means to be a PAC member, please reach out to us at pac@sfusd.edu and also consider coming to our meeting on Thursday evening. Meeting information can be found at sfusd.edu/pac. Agendas, location, and information is posted at least 72 hours prior to the meeting. If you're interested in attending a PAC meeting, would like to partner with the PAC or have any questions or comments about this report or the PAC's work in general, please contact us at pac@sfusd.edu.
Thank you, Luz. Finally, the PAC would also like to encourage the board to explore ways that we can be more responsive to the ever-changing situation with COVID. Cases are rising right now, at the same time that masking mandates are falling away. And it's impacting the PAC and probably other advisory groups as well and our volunteer parent leaders. Because we're required to meet in person, but we're challenged to find sufficient childcare providers just are very hesitant to provide care for small children when the cases are rising. Some people are catching COVID. They're part of that rise. And of course, it's the end of the year, and providers who might be students at different levels are also kind of wrapped up with their own stuff. But a lot of folks are just feeling a little unsafe. And I know that it's tricky because of the Brown Act, and it requires some state action. But we just appreciate if there's any strategizing we can do around the potential to better support hybrid meetings, for example. Our members personally would like to return to virtual. But we understand that's not a possibility. But we look forward to maybe sharing some strategies on some solutions in the interim. And thinking forward, you know, this is something that's probably going to be with us for a long time, as well as other situations that may come up, whether it's wildfires in the fall or whatever might come our way. We just would like to be able to think a little more proactively so that we're not just constantly kind of reacting behind the curve. So thank you. That concludes our report. We appreciate this opportunity, and we welcome your questions, comments, and responses.
Before I open up for questions, I'd like to call upon public comment. I have Alita Fisher, Selena Chu, and Josephine Zhao.
Hi, everyone. On behalf of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, I'd like to thank the PAC for their report and engagement as always. We appreciate your work. And I'd like to lift up the comment about the QT PAC. All parents deserve an avenue affinity space. All parents deserve support from the district in raising and highlighting their issues. And this is an important stakeholder group. All of us advisory committees exist because of the assistance and the collaboration from a liaison. And so making sure that that's prioritized and this group is prioritized is something that many of us advisory committees are very, very passionate about. Also, LCAP is the main stakeholder engagement around budget. And Michelle has And Michelle has done a very heavy lift this year herself around stakeholder engagement. This is a job that should not be on an independent person. We need a district liaison. We need someone managing that work. Our budget should reflect our values. If we value stakeholder engagement, we need to hire someone.
Hi, my name is Selena Chu. I'm also a parent, a volunteer parent on the PAC. I'm here today. Michelle is probably surprised why I'm here because I feel like it's very important for me to come out and speak. So I had to email, you know, the after-school program. I have to also arrange, you know, childcare with a friend so I can be out here. So I really encourage you to look for alternative options in additional to in-person meeting, even for a, like, parent advisory group because it's so important that these parents' needs are also looked at because they have work and they also have kids. You know, they might not even have sufficient transportation to come out here to, you know, to join these meetings. So think about, you know, hyper option like Michelle mentioned earlier, or maybe even, you know, resume to virtual and allow people to speak. Thank you.
Josephine Zhao here. Thank you, PAC. Thank you, Michelle and Luz, for being here, making the reports. I would like to speak about the participation of PAC. I know the number of members of PAC is really less than optimal. We could totally use double or triple the size of participation. And especially, it's term, you know, a lot of people are terming out. Some people are terming out. So I think when we have inclusivity, then we can talk about diversity. We need to have people starting to participate, and then we include everyone we can, all the active parents. They deserve to have a spot at PAC. And then we can continue to elevate the diversity within our parent body. I also support a hybrid so that parents like us, that we can make it to the meetings, as well as I'm hoping that the Chinese Parent Advisory Council can be introduced. Thank you.
We will now take public comment virtually in wanting to keep it within the five minutes, and we've had three speakers. But let's go ahead and take those three speakers, please.
Thank you. If you care to give public comment on the Parent Advisory Council report, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Reynelle? Oh, sorry. Can we have that translated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas noches. Por favor, levante su mano si desea hacer un comentario público. El, la duración es de cinco minutos y es relacionado al rubro que se acaba de comentar. Gracias.
If a parent wants to read the PAC's report, the parent's咨詢委員會的報告, make a statement, then you can raise your hand. Thank you.
Reynelle?
Sorry, that was an error.
Okay, thank you. Caller ending in 853. Caller ending in 853.
Hi, this is Virginia Marshall. On behalf of the African-American community, I just want to thank the PAC for their great support. And we want to encourage, we join in encouraging the board to continue with hybrid meetings. It allows underrepresented families to participate and especially to give their public comments and to listen to see what's happening at the children's schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. President Lamb, that concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. I'd like to open up if there's any questions, comments from colleagues. Commissioner Alexander?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak briefly to the issue around the Equity Audit Committee. I don't know if Vice President Bogus wanted to add anything, but the, just because I think there has been a lack of clarity. The committee has been paused, and there were some issues with the last meeting around people not being able to attend in person when we were returning to in-person meetings. And so, and actually expressing kind of that that wasn't going to work for folks. So we delayed that meeting, and Vice President Bogus and I are speaking individually with the different committee members. So we really want to make sure that we talk with everyone on the committee and hear from them, and then figure out, once we hear that, we'll come back to the group with some proposed next steps, both in terms of how the meetings will work, but also it seems like there's some lack of clarity around the committee's purpose and some other things. So we want to just get that kind of in order by hearing from all the committee members individually before moving forward.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Alexander. I really appreciate that, and I'm sure members of the public will too.
And sorry, just to say it is taking a little while. And just, you know, we're part, we have full-time, we both have other full-time jobs. And so just so folks know, it is in process, but it's, you know, we're making it happen as quickly as we can.
Thank you. I think that's really what folks just want to know. They just want to know what's going on. Thank you so much.
And I want to thank Vice President Bogus and Commissioner Alexander for taking on that leadership role to be able to do the intentional follow-up conversations with each individual and then really being able to put forward both a recommendation that really meets to the core of the purpose of that committee moving forward.
Thank you so much for your report. I think really just lifting up and appreciating you for kind of echoing and kind of amplifying the voice of families and students who have issues in the district and kind of bringing those to us here. And I think just to say, for me on the board, just really want to figure out a way to extend those conversations outside of the boardroom and really be able to engage in a lot of dialogue and conversation before we kind of get to decision-making places. And so really hoping to figure out how we can do that as we get closer to the summer and working with the PAC and the other advisory committees, as well as our community partners and school sites and supervisors, really in everyone, just so that we can be in dialogue and really have transparency, understanding of the intentions that we're all kind of putting forward in this work. So thank you again for your work and your report.
Thank you. That would be great.
I love that idea. So thank you, Vice President Bogus. And thank you for the presentation. Looking forward to seeing you on Thursday night. I had, I'm, I'm, I am wondering if there's any possibility for outreach to our SSCs or PTAs for the space on the Parent Advisory Committee? Just to, I'm not, I am still running into parents who are not familiar with it, despite all the work that you all put in and your regular meeting times and report outs to the board. And it would be lovely, especially as we move towards elevating the LCAP in our process, that our school site council members in particular are assuredly and made aware. I don't know what the heavy lift is, but I would just encourage that connection if it's not too difficult.
I'd be happy to draw up something that would just be sort of an overview that I could share with folks. And then I think the real question is, and maybe we can partner with Second District to get some PTA contacts. In terms of site council, I don't know where that information is held, if it's at state and federal, or if there is a list of folks, or maybe it's just the administrators.
Second District would be great and ask them to push it out to their school site councils just to keep it easier. Yeah, well, thank you.
I had one question related to recruitment, and I appreciate sharing that how, as members are also terming off, how important it is to have kind of, I'll call it a pipeline, but kind of a development, leadership development. That has been traditionally, YPAC has been, you know, an important body for the district. What's the timing as far as recruitment? I didn't see that in the report, and would be helpful, I think, to also share that with the public.
Great, great point. Thank you. Sorry that I didn't think to put that in. We are in the current recruitment, you know, actively recruiting phase. The process is that we have a form on our webpage, and so it'll auto-translate, I believe, to the languages that are supported on the webpage. And then I checked that, and we set up meetings with folks. I reach out, you know, do you have any questions? And then we set up like a little interview with myself and a couple of PAC members, and the person interested. We're doing those virtually. And we are looking to have a preliminary list of folks for our June 9 PAC meeting. And then we would bring that to the following Board of Education meeting. I recognize that there's not probably, that like we would be missing our time to turn in information by the Wednesday if we're doing that for the next Tuesday. So we might need to finesse that a little bit just because I would hate to wait till the very end of June. But that is, that's when we would ideally do that. I know we've also, I've also been in discussion with a couple of commissioners over the last year about making a slight change to our bylaws that formed, or the resolution that formed the PAC so that we would be able to make recommendations or nominations of PAC members at times other than once a year, just because this last year, we had folks that were, came on, kind of expressed interest in the fall, and then we just really weren't able to have a process to support them coming onto the PAC. So that's also something we'd love to move on.
Thank you so much. So no additional. Thank you so much for your presentation tonight to PAC and all of our PAC members in attendance.
Thank you so much.
At this time, we will go to the presentation of the Charter School Oversight Committee. I'd like to call upon Director of Policy and Planning, Chris Armentraut, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chris Armentraut, Director of Policy and Planning. I'm the staff liaison for the Charter School Oversight Committee. Very privileged to have that honor, and I will pass it over to our Chair, Michelle Parker.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, Commissioners and Superintendent Matthews. My name is Michelle Parker. I'm Chair of the Charter Schools Oversight Committee. I am joined by my colleagues on the committee, Alida Fisher and Vice Chair, Sayira Uturios. And we thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight and share what we've been working on over the past year. Next slide, please. Thank you. Our brief agenda tonight is just going to give you an introduction of ourselves, share with you the purpose of our committee, an overview of some of our priorities this past year, and updates on our progress advancing those priorities, and then share with you a few recommendations and hear any questions you might have. Next slide. This is a list of our committee members currently. You'll notice there are five. There are 11 seats, so we have six vacancies. And we would love to remind and encourage you all to fill those seats for us because we are a small but mighty team. We could really use some more folks. So thank you for that. And reminder, there's a couple of student seats on that. And although I know we don't have students here tonight, but we have reminded them, and would love to have some students on our committee as well. This year has been a bumpy year. Same slide, the introduction slide, please. Thanks. This has been a bumpy year for us, just as it has been for many people. We've had some turnover on our committee members moving out of San Francisco. We had a teacher who needed to limit their focus to their classroom. We've got some new board members this, new committee members this year, and some who were appointed by previous commissioners. There was that transition that happened on lots of advisories during that time. We had a staff transition with Mike Davis retiring and Chris Armentraut now taking over his work and becoming familiar with our charter schools in the district. Now it's all sorted out, and we look forward to continuing work to advance our priorities, which I'll share in just a minute. And now, Sayira will share some information about our committee, how it was formed, and what our purpose is. Next slide, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sayira. The Charter School Oversight Committee was formed with the passage of the 2018 Board Resolution in support of increased oversight, transparency, and accountability for charter schools in relation to fiscal, educational, and socio-emotional impact on San Francisco Unified School students. Our committee was formed in 2019. It is the responsibility of the district and board to provide oversight to the charter schools they have authorized, to make sure students in those schools are being served as planned in the application the school submitted and that were approved by this body. So this is an important committee doing work that often doesn't rise to the level of priority that many others do, need to within their responsibility of this district. The resolution sets out our charge and purpose at committee members, which I'd like to share now. You can also find this on the San Francisco Unified School District website page devoted to our committee. This committee specifically views the following: demographic of students served in each charter school, desegregated by subgroup; demographic of students who leave each charter school each year, desegregated by subgroup; demographic of students retained year-to-year by grade level at each charter school, desegregated by subgroup; teacher credentials and purpose assigned and retention rates at each charter school; parents and staff representation in charter school governance; the reason for students transferred to San Francisco Unified School District from charter schools were applicable; the provision of service to the charter school students with IEPs by school special education local plan area; and investigations of complaints received by the San Francisco Unified School District concerning the charter schools. Now I'll pass this to Alida to share what kind of questions committees has been exploring over the past three years.
Thank you, Sayira. This is a, next slide, please. This is a list of data points and information our committee is looking for and asking charter schools to share with us when they come to make presentations to our committee, which is usually when their charter school, their charter's up for renewal. But sometimes, we just follow up on previous conversations with them to share about big initiatives they have coming up as well. The items with an R next to them on this slide are specifically listed in the Board Resolution that formed this committee that Sayira just shared with you. Commissioners who were on the board last year have seen this list included in summaries that we sent to you related to a couple of the charter school renewal petitions last year. However, the list above summarizes more data than that that we have reviewed in years past. As Michelle mentioned, we are a small but mighty committee. We would like your feedback about what areas, additional areas within this slide, if you'd like us to prioritize for review next year. And Michelle will talk about this year's priorities on the next slide.
Thank you. The Charter Schools Oversight Committee held a retreat in August to determine our priorities for this year, and those were, first of all, to gain a better understanding of why students leave charter schools. We wanted to know things like what data is available? How is this tracked? Are there disparities between student subgroups? The second item is we wanted to ensure that families have support when they are experiencing concerns at their school. We want to know things like, do families know about the Charter School Oversight Committee as an oversight mechanism? Is there a clear process for families at each school to follow if and when they have concerns? And then the third area is we wanted to find out if we could determine how participation in different special education local plan areas, or SLPAs, impacts students. We want to know, is there a clear benefit to students and families in either SLPA? And that's the Eldorado or the SFUSD SLPA. And should or can the Oversight Committee recommend membership in a particular SLPA for SFUSD-authorized charter schools? Next slide, please. So to get a little bit more in detail on our first priority, that is to gain a better understanding of why students leave charter schools. Since the committee formed, one of our questions has been about why students leave charter schools. Frankly, this is a question we also have about SFUSD students when they leave for charters or go elsewhere. Understanding the why helps us understand what's missing in both places. Is there some way to conduct exit interviews, for instance? But given the charge of our committee, we will obviously focus on charters. We are wondering, how do we get the real data around why students are leaving charter schools? Is it a push-out, or is it a family choice, something else? How does this relate to school site discipline? Are students with IEPs or students of color disproportionately impacted? How are we tracking, how are we tracking this? And do we need to add more data requests when we speak with charter schools? What accountability measures are in place or what can be implemented? What accountability measures are in place, or what can be implemented? For example, SFUSD has the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Discipline Matrix. Is this being utilized, or anything similar? Longer term, we'd like to see a procedure developed for SFUSD authorized charters to disclose more accurate information and more specific elements of information about why students are leaving. For example, preventing non-disclosure agreements. We want to know if we can hear directly from the parents and teachers instead of only from the charter school administrators. We are still researching the answer to this question, and importantly, we want to not make assumptions about why people are leaving. So one of the first things that we did was to review historical enrollment data for all charter schools alongside SFUSD enrollment data for the past 20 years to see if there are trends. In 2001, there were six charter schools in SFUSD. Today, there are 14, including two authorized by the state, which has been about the number of charters in SFUSD plus or minus one or two for the past 10 years. The total SFUSD enrollment was about the same 10 years ago as it was last year, which is a little under 52,000. Charter school enrollment across SFUSD and non-SFUSD charter authorized schools has gone up during that same period by about 1,500 students. Some of that is just caused by expanded grade levels at schools and sites. As we've met with school site staff over the past two years, we always ask about their student retention and subgroups of students, and we'd like to compile all of this in one place, again, looking for possible trends over cross, across time.
I am so sorry. This is the interpreter. Can you please slow down? Yes, you're going way too fast.
Yes. Just trying to squeeze in my 10 minutes here. Okay, I'll slow down. Okay. The anecdotal data we often hear from charter school staff is about where families go, not why. This includes families moving out of the city, which of course is true for all schools, moving to SFUSD or somewhere else. Now we are going to continue asking these questions that I listed before of our staff with this committee, finding out what possibilities we are allowed to pursue. Can we initiate surveys for families as they leave, et cetera? Now, Sayira will talk about our second priority area. Next slide, please.
We want any and all schools to provide a clear process for sharing and addressing concerns, including charter schools. We've been wondering if those processes are clear at San Francisco Unified School District authorized charter schools, and where parents might find them. We did an audit of each school's website to see if we could find three things. One, mention of the charter schools Oversight Committee on their website. Two, clear process for addressing concerns on their web, website, family handbook, or other process, I'm, I'm sorry, other resources. Three, reference to uniform complaint procedure required by law. We found that only one school mentioned the Charter School Oversight Committee, Leadership High School, who also invited people to read our website and report and encourage feedback, citing a culture of continuous improvement. Majority of schools do not have way to share anonymous complaints, only through contact forms. Other formal complaint procedures, inviting language, and family handbook to be involved, et cetera. All schools but the uniform complaint procedure of their website, and a handful have many more compliance and legal documents easily findable. On most websites, this information was not easily to find, sometimes under an accountability or legal link, sometimes with family resources pages. Our committee recommends is that all schools make all three of these items easily findable for their websites, including in language if they have large populations of certain native speakers. Now, Alita will share information about our third priority area.
Thank you, Sayira. Since the committee was formed nearly three years ago, we've been very interested to understand the way charter schools are serving subgroups of students, including students receiving special education services. Based on what we've understood about the El Dorado SLPA, which is a statewide charter-only special education local plan area, we worried that families might not receive the support they needed in navigating a complicated special education system. We wanted to see if this was true, and if there was an obvious better choice between El Dorado and San Francisco Unified SLPA for best-serving students and their families and working with staff. The committee developed a survey to send to administration and special education professionals about their SLPA participation. We sent that earlier this spring. We asked them what factors led to their SLPA choice, if they knew, what was working, what additional support they might need, and if there is anything that would make them consider switching SLPAs. Seven schools responded across both SLPAs. The main criteria shared that led to their SLPA choice was support for students, ranked in both SLPAs, training for staff in both, continuity with SFUSD leadership was a high priority in San Francisco SFUSD SLPA, cost, high priority in El Dorado SLPA, geographic flexibility, ranked high in El Dorado SLPA, meaningful engagement with families ranked high in El Dorado as well. What we heard regarding San Francisco Unified was that they liked that students have access to a continuity of services, including many different kinds of special day classes. We also heard that staff at San Francisco Unified SLPA schools haven't always had access to the same professional development the rest of SFUSD traditional schools have gotten. They do receive support meeting the needs of students, and that reliable, available, responsive, and knowledgeable special education supervisors and content specialists support their jobs. They get excellent and frequent communication and collaboration with SFUSD staff, and that when no content specialist is available, as has happened this year due to staff reassignments, it's harder to serve students. They also noted that the switch to Empower this year has been difficult for them as well, and because there are an extra layer removed from our HR department, traditional challenges reaching with implementing HR particular issues has been difficult and made it hard to support staff and help staff get answers as well. And they also report that they wish they had more school psychologists available on staff more often for their students. What we heard regarding El Dorado SLPA was that it's user-friendly and they have excellent professional development. The staff is organized, friendly, and knowledgeable. And one school was told that the SFUSD SLPA wasn't an option when they first applied as a charter. The excellent staff supports their students, and they would also like more help with behavioral interventions through staff professional development, more support for new teachers. They also feel that there's a lot of misinformation about their SLPA and the family supports that are available, and feel that this is being used to create dissension. As far as those that might consider switching SLPAs, they would do so if it meant that they could receive more support, if costs in El Dorado increased, or if they were to lose the ability to select their own staff. We noticed that some of the comments from spokes in the SFUSD SLPA had similar concerns to those voiced by those of us in the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. We plan to share the feedback we received through the survey responses with both SFUSD SLPA staff and the El Dorado County SLPA staff, so they can hear both the positive feedback and where opportunities for improvement are. And so this leads to our recommendations in this area. We recommend that SFUSD develop a pathway for SFUSD charter schools to join more, or, I'm sorry, for SFUSD charter schools to join the SFUSD SLPA if they so choose. We recommend that all staff within the SFUSD SLPA have more consistent training available to them, and we also think that SFUSD should hire more school psychologists. Now, Michelle will summarize our committee recommendations and close us out.
Thanks, Leigh. So here's a summary of what you've heard from us in these last three slides about our priorities. First, our committee is going to continue learning why families leave charter schools and where they go, so that's on us for now. Regarding making sure that families are able to address concerns at their school, we are requesting that all charter schools make easily available information about our Oversight Committee's presence and availability, uniform complaint procedure information on their websites easily findable, and ways to share concerns with their schools, including anonymously. And then regarding the SLPAs, we would like to recommend, as Leigh just said, SFUSD could develop a pathway for schools to switch SLPAs to SFUSD, that we want to see more consistent special education training available to staff within the SFUSD SLPA, and that the school district should also hire more school psychologists. Next slide, please. That is all from us. We thank you again for the opportunity to present. A one final reminder to please fill our vacant seats, and now we are happy to hear any questions or feedback. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the committee for your reports. At this time, I'd like to open up for a public comment. I'll have Michelle Jacomenez.
Thank you so much, Michelle Jacomenez, Coordinator for the PAC. I just want to appreciate the Charter Oversight Committee for all their work. Really, really interesting to hear what the, what the schools and the families are saying, and the concerns they have, the supports that they're asking for, and, and what they're really looking for. So just thank you, and encourage you to really listen in to what they have to say. Thank you.
And we'll take public comment virtually.
If you care to speak to this item, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches. Por favor levanten sus manos si desea hacer un comentario público. Gracias.
Caller, go ahead. Hava?
Yes, hi. First, I'd like to thank you. I am a mom of a student with an IEP, so I really appreciate you uplifting SLPAs. So one suggestion I have is that often when, or if parents who have students with IEPs are trying to figure out if a charter is even a possibility, that information about that there might be another SLPA is not clearly, parents are not clearly informed about it often. They do not know that there's El Dorado versus SFUSD, so I wanted to just highlight that. And the second thing is, I just, because I wanted to take this opportunity to say that I have mixed feelings about charters in general. But sometimes families need other options, and I would like to request that students with IEPs and other marginalized groups, that that is uplifted and that their needs are met in a, in a, in a better way, and this oversight continues, because it's very, very important to have choice sometimes. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Hava. President Lam, that concludes our virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you. I'd like to open up for Commissioners for questions. I see Commissioner Weissman Ward and then Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. As one of the newer Commissioners, I'm, I'm learning, and so this is really helpful to be learning about not only this committee, which I, I know I have an appointment to make, but, but just the work, work that you all are doing. So thank you for, for sharing. I had three specific follow-ups slash questions. One is on Slide 5, when you, I think we're, and when you went over the information we're reviewing, and what I heard was a, an ask, is there any other information that, that we're curious about? I guess one other piece of information that I would be curious about is whether you all are tracking which of these charters are collect, are, have collectively bargained agreements with their educators and staff. I think that, for me, is something that is important to, to know. And then I had another question about, you know, the recommendations slash requests, which is, what is, and apologies if this isn't an answer I should know, but, but what is the sort of the, the oversight, oversight slash accountability mechanisms if recommendations are not followed through, or if certain requests for information or things to be posted on websites are not, are not done? What, what's the mechanism for accountability there? And then I had a third question, but maybe I'll, I'll pause there to, to let you answer the, the second one.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, and take, and I might need Chris to jump, jump in on the second one a little bit. The first one is, actually, we have been asking about collective bargaining agreements, and we do have some. We have Creative Arts, it has collective bargaining and also Five Keys, I believe those, do we have, or actually, Edison does, and also, it doesn't envision also?
Yeah.
Yeah. Envision with Leadership does. So we've got four.
Cat.
Yeah. Leadership combined with Cat is, is collective bargaining. So Five Keys, that, Thomas Edison and Creative Arts, so four of them. How collected. Is Gateway? I don't think Gateway is. Does anybody here know? Is Gateway part of?
I think Gateway is.
Okay. So five. So that is the, the first one. So that is something we definitely ask about when we meet with them, if we don't already know about it. And then with accountability, I, I think that we are limited in what we can require, but we can make strong suggestions. Chris, do you want to join in on that?
Yeah. What I, what I would offer is that when there's cases like where it's state law, as was noted in the presentation, we can point that out, raise that for the charters, strongly encourage them to, to follow the law, and while there might not be an immediate accountability, it is something that could ultimately affect their renewal.
Was there a third?
There is a third, which is, you know, given, I, I hear the small but mighty, and appreciate that this is important work, and it would be nice to have more folks lifting that, 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 that load. And so, from your perspectives on the committee, are there certain additional perspectives and, and backgrounds that you think would be useful in terms of rounding out the work that, that you all are wanting and needing to do?
I think families for whom English is not their first language is a critical population that would be very important to have their perspective. An additional answer to your previous question, though, Charter School Oversight Committee members sit in on the petition reviews, and, and when a charter school is up for renewal, we do go and we visit and we participate in that process. And so we're, we are becoming much more visual parts of the accountability process as, in that. And, and so we're hoping over the next few years that'll lead to our recommendations being taken even more serious as they see us as part of that renewal process as well. And then if you wanted to take the next question, I'll...
I agree with what she said. I think parents are very important, especially parents that feel like they might not have a voice, or might feel like there's, they want some type of transparency in their schools. I think that's very important as a parent, myself, that we sometimes forget that when a school loses the trust of a parent, it's very hard for them to get it, and they want some type of accountability, or some type of unbiased, and, you know, investigation or look into. So I think parents are the most important thing. And like we've said before, I think also students, because I think that sometimes students forget that they have a voice, and I think what we've been trying to do this generation is teach our kids that they have a voice, that they're able to say what they're feeling and their opinion. And who better than the kids, if they're the ones that are in the classroom with the teachers and the administrators, than the kids to hold their own administrators accountable for whatever's going on in the school? Because honestly, when they come to us, it's a completely different view than what we get. But the kids are the most important ones that we all, we definitely need to listen to.
I would add, we do have one, one former teacher on our committee. We have Alita Blanc, who is not able to join us here tonight, but more teachers, I think, having that educator perspective. We did have another educator on the committee, and so that's also a really helpful perspective to bring. And then the other thing I just wanted to note, when Alita was just talking about how we, our presence with the, with the charter schools, and as we meet with them, and they'll come and spend an hour with us sometimes in our committee, and, and they're so receptive to our questions. And, and we do make often requests of information, and they are pretty quick to get back to us and follow up. We have had some schools who haven't had any parent representation on their governing bodies, who have then made moves to bring parent representation into their governing bodies, so that's been a positive thing. When we're asking about disparities in subgroup, they are quick to get us the information. And so it has been some really good, I think, healthy dialogue as they've come and joined us there. So, and, and I think there's, there's a lot of value in just asking questions sometimes because it brings that issue and that topic just to the forefront of attention. And so when we are asking the questions that you just mentioned, Commissioner Weissman Ward, on Slide 5, we give them that list before they come present to us, so they know what we already want to know, so they can be prepared with that. So if it's not data they're already collecting, they know we're looking for it, and so they start looking for it and presenting it. So I think it just creates more transparency and dialogue on these topics, and that's, that's a positive thing. Even if we can't enforce some of that, it still just creates more awareness and dialogue around it.
Thank you. So Commissioner Weissman Ward asked the questions I was going to ask, but I really do want to appreciate you publicly for the work you've been doing on, are we going to call it the CSOC? The CSOC, okay. I really, really, I know we all appreciate the hard work, and there's four members right now. There's eight, there's eight, there's five?
We have five currently. There are six spots open.
Okay. So on the, then we need to update this slide, I think, but... Okay, so on the, then we need to update this slide, I think. But so five, and that means there's six or seven still open, including our student delegates can actually appoint. And so commissioners, if you haven't appointed yet, please make that one of your priorities so that we can have a full body. And I'm glad you gave some feedback of what kind of candidates you'd like to see on the, on the body. So thank you again for your work.
Yeah, thank you. It's amazing what you were able to accomplish with such a small group. And I too am interested in more follow-up on priority one in particular of the why that choice is made. And as follow-up, I think you asked earlier in the presentation if there's additional areas from that list that, that we have interest in. And I would, I would love to have more information about achievement data by subgroup, because ostensibly charters were developed so they can approach teaching and learning in a different way. And so if we're seeing that there's differences than what we're seeing in our school sites, if there's things that we should either be concerned about at a charter, but, or the things that we should be learning from as well. So I'd be really interested in better understanding if, how closely our charters are tracking with what we're, we're tracking as a district. But thank you so much. And yes, noted about the vacancies. I really, really appreciate the presentation.
I just want to thank you. When you're asking the questions, you are, it'll help us because that's a long list. And so we can prioritize with our small but mighty group on things that we want to look into. So we will, and I do want to let you know that that is something that we do ask about, the achievement data. And some of the information we have on the Charter Schools Oversight Committee webpage does have a library that we've been trying to build over time, that each time we do a spotlight or have a school come visit, we will get that subgroup data and, and also compare it against similar-sized and location-type schools, like try to find similar schools within SFUSD to compare that to, to the point you just made, Commissioner Motomedy.
I just had a comment around, thank you so much for the work, particularly around priority three, around what, you know, for our next steps around the recommendations, exploration around pathways for schools to switch SULPAs and just digging a bit more around, you know, the responses that aligned with our sped CAC, SF Unified and the concerns there with the SULPA. I think moreover, as a board, as we've been looking at really honing in on county, county versus arts, school district, unified school district, I think that's going to be an important continued, I almost say exploration, but delineation as well, as that was one of the recommendations that did come through. It was FICMAT, that report. All right. Thank you again so very much for the work and for the presentation tonight. Colleagues, we are now heading into close to our fourth hour of the meeting. So I would like to recess for 10 minutes. Let's return actually at a quarter to nine, which gives us nine minutes. So we will see you soon. Thank you. Okay, now let's do 10 minutes. It changed again. So let's come back at 8:47. To, we are moving items H, Proposal for Action, and I, Special Order of Business, up. So at this time, I'd like to have for item number one under Proposals for Action, Resolution of the San Francisco Board of Education 2231 SP1, Recognizing Juneteenth Independence Day and Declaring June 19th, 2022, and June 19th of each year thereafter as a local holiday. Superintendent Matthews.
Yes, I am looking for our General Counsel, who I believe is right in the hallway. And there she is. So entering and entering this item into the record will be our General Counsel, Daniel Hauck.
My computer has chosen this moment to die. So tonight, commissioners, we're asking that you approve Juneteenth as a holiday in the district effective this year. We've already noted it on our draft calendars, but it's pending your approval tonight. Thank you, sir. So our recommendation is that you adopt Resolution Number 2231 SP1, Resolution of the School Board, Recognizing Juneteenth Independence Day and Declaring June 19th and 2022, and June 19th of each year thereafter as a local holiday. Thank you, Mr. Steele.
I'm gonna open. I'm realizing General Counsel probably need a, a motion in a second.
Yes, you do, President Lam.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. At this time, I will like to open for a public comment. Let's do up to five minutes, please. I'd like to have Lita Fisher.
On behalf of the Special Education Community Advisory Committee and as a member of the African American Parent Advisory Council, myself, just like to thank you all, anyone who was involved in this resolution, representation matters not only in the classroom, but in what we celebrate and what we teach our children and what we put on our calendar. And this means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also now like to have our virtual, actually, yeah, I'm sorry, Chris Claus?
I swear I'll be quick for the virtual folks. I just wanted to express support for making Juneteenth an SFUSD holiday. It's important to recognize holidays that are important to all of our students, all of the cultures in our community. And Juneteenth will be an important one to recognize, especially for students with IEPs who are in ESY and students who are in credit recovery over the summer. They deserve to have the opportunity to learn about Juneteenth through having that day off and being able to learn and ask questions around it. Thank you.
At this time, we will hear public comment on the resolution recognizing Juneteenth Independence Day. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to this item. Rianda?
Good evening again, Board Commissioners, Deputy Superintendent Matthews, Deputy Student from Adele and everybody else in attendance and virtual tonight. I am a member of the African American Parent Advisory Council and we are at 100% and full support of recognizing Juneteenth as a national holiday for SFUSD in honor of all, all members, recognize and get their day off to celebrate with their family.
Thank you, Rianda. Tony?
Good evening, Commissioners and Superintendent Matthews and student delegates. I am Tony Heinz and I'm just extremely proud of you all for making this a national, state holiday or accepting it because you're not shying away and trying to claim it's critical race theory or some of the other crazy stuff going on throughout the nation. So thank you, San Francisco Board of Education, for being a thought partner. And have a good day. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Michelle? Michelle?
Yes, thank you. This is Michelle Jacques-Minickus with the Parent Advisory Council. And I just want to also echo my support and the PAC's support for the observation of the Juneteenth holiday and the ability to talk a little more openly and educate our families and our students about the importance of this holiday. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. I'd like to open up for colleagues, any comments, or superintendent.
So I just have a procedural question. I'm, I'm just confused procedurally in that I thought we approved Juneteenth when we approved the calendar. And then it's also a national holiday. So I guess I'm unclear procedurally how we bring holidays. And it would seem to me that this board would just defer to the federal, state and city and county when a holiday is already been. So I'm not sure why this is before us for a second time.
So Commissioner Motomedy, the first time it, it just appeared as a notation on the calendar, but that was not asking you to approve Juneteenth as an additional holiday. It was just really an informational item so that families would know and staff would know that, that that was pending board approval through this resolution. Juneteenth is one of those holidays that the federal, well, President Biden created through a specific means that doesn't actually mandate that we as a state entity observe it. So it is the discretion of the board and every public agency in California to, unless and until Governor Newsom makes it a state mandated holiday, the district is not required to observe it. So it requires separate board action to create an official holiday.
Thank you. I'd like to have roll call. And do you want to note our student delegates are also, are joining us?
I'm sorry, what was that, President Lam? Thank you. Yes, of course. Student Delegate Lam?
Yes.
Student Delegate Liang? Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Xu?
Yes.
Commissioner Motomedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Lam?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Now going to item number two under H, Public Hearing, the Material Revision to the City Arts and Technology High School Charter. I now open the public hearing to the material revision to the City Arts and Technology High School Charter. I'd like to call upon Superintendent Matthews to introduce the designee.
Thank you, President Lam. Introducing this item tonight will be our Director of Policy and Planning, Chris Armentraub.
Good evening again, Commissioners. My name is Chris Armentraub, Director of Policy and Planning, and I'm the Charter School Liaison for SFUSD. I'm presenting tonight for the board's consideration and material revision for the City Arts and Tech High School. I'm also joined remotely by Ms. Gia Trung, Executive, Chief Executive Officer for Envision Education. Ms. Trung was unable to attend in person as she is quarantining with COVID, but she is available to answer any questions that you may have. Commissioners, you have the full analysis and report for this material revision, as well as the details provided in the presentation slide deck. With your permission, though, rather than read each slide in detail, I will instead provide a higher level overview of the process, the analysis, and the recommendations to the board. And then hopefully, we can use the available time to address specific questions or concerns that you may have. Commissioners, the material revision before you tonight is to allow City Arts and Technology High School, which is soon to become City Arts and Leadership High School, to operate a single campus rather than at two campuses beginning in the 2022-23 school year. The material revisions are governed by California Education Code 47605, which requires staff to review them under five specific criteria which are listed here. These include ensuring a sound educational program and governance, the likelihood of the charter's success, and the fiscal impact on the district. The staff review of each of these criteria are detailed, excuse me, are detailed within the report and in the slide deck. It is staff's opinion that the material revision does meet all five of these criteria. To speak briefly, the material revision does not change the governance nor its instructional program. The submission does reflect the interest of the community as the community desired this, this revision and to be operating on a single campus. In terms of likelihood of success, the campus will be crowded, will be crowded in 2223, but the school has taken multiple steps to help mitigate this situation, including redesign of their master schedule and a plan to maximize classroom use. Finally, there is a fiscal impact to SFUSD with the loss of 130,000 annually in rent. However, it should be pointed out that the district will regain use of the property at 325 La Grande Avenue, providing the district with additional space and flexibility in their facility use. So in summary, it's the staff's conclusion that the City Arts and Technology Master, Material Revision meets the criteria set forth in the California Education Code. It is our recommendation that the board approve this and allow the school to operate a single campus at 350 Seneca Avenue, beginning in the 2223 school year.
Thank you. And for clarification, are we having a presentation tonight by the petitioners? No?
No, Ms. Trung is available for questions, but she's not present, as I understand.
As you recall, they did the presentation at the first.
Thank you. I don't see any in-person public comment. Do I see any online, virtual speakers?
Not seen any virtual public comment at this time.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second, please. Removed. I so moved.
Second.
Any comments from board or superintendent? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Student Delegate Lam?
Yes.
Student Delegate Liang?
Yes. Also, so sorry, I don't know why I couldn't unmute on the last item, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Xu?
Yes.
Commissioner Motomedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Lam?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. We will now go into item number three, Board Policy 5127, Graduation Ceremonies and Activities. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Matthews, like to call upon who to introduce as designee.
Introducing this item will be our General Counsel, Daniel Hauck.
Tonight, we're asking that you approve Board Policy 5127, Graduation Ceremonies and Activities.
And public comment, we have one in-person public comment. Chris Claus?
Hi, from my brief review of this, I think it's an awesome idea to allow students who would finish their credits over summer to participate in graduation. It's something that I know that some colleges have done for a while. And I think it would be really awesome, especially for some students who've struggled recently. And I'd also just like to ask a graduation-related question about why high schools are required to do it at KESAR when our communities would generally, at least at Washington, prefer to do it at Washington, where all staff members can attend to support the students that we've been supporting for four years, especially through a pandemic. If it's at KESAR at 9:00 AM, we can't go because it's on a school day. Just a thought. Anyway, thanks.
There's no virtual, oh, sorry. There is one comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. Alicia, this is Michelle Jacques-Minickus. I would also just echo what Chris Claus just shared. I think this is a fantastic idea. It is student-centered. And I would also echo the ability of sites to be able to hold their graduation their graduation ceremonies as they've done on their campuses for the reasons that you just heard. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Colleagues wanted to open up for discussion, and I know that Student Delegate Lam had comments.
Thank you, President Lam. Yes, I wanted to actually echo some of what was said during public comment, and I apologize, I can't turn my video on for whatever reason. Tech is just not working with me today. But I think that this is a great idea to include students, especially given, I think, how arduous the last couple of years have been, but also knowing how tough high school is. If we know that students are going to be able to complete their credits during the summer session, or at least have a plan to complete graduation, I think they should be able to walk the stage. And I think this is a great step, as many people have brought up, it's really student-centered. I also wanted to lift up that piece that's tangentially related to graduation ceremonies in that I've had a lot of students from Washington in particular come up to me and ask why they're not holding their graduation ceremony on their field like they used to. And I understand that all of these things are kind of in place at the moment, but I would like to make sure that we keep that in mind moving forward, that we honor traditions that certain school sites have in holding graduation at their sites, so that the community can participate. But again, I'm super in favor of this policy.
Thank you, Student Delegate Lam, and Commissioner Sanchez.
So that second issue around where high schools can or cannot have their graduation ceremonies, that does not pertain to this resolution, but I do think it would be wise for staff to have outreach to sites about this issue.
Thank you. Vice President Bogus?
I was wondering if staff could talk a little bit about if there would still be, and if there is, I guess, graduation ceremonies currently for students who graduate in the summer, separate from their class, and kind of how that will be handled moving forward? Or would it essentially be you would graduate with your class, then you kind of go to a summer program, and there wouldn't be a ceremony kind of connection to that?
That would be correct, because you've already been through a ceremony.
All right, thank you. Roll call vote, please, starting with student delegates.
Thank you, President Lam. Student Delegate Lam?
Yes.
Student Delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lam?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. I do want to have one adjustment, because it is 9:00. I am going to instead move up item J for Introduction of Proposal and Assignment to Committee instead of I. So we will hear item I after the Special Order of Business, after Introduction of Proposals and Assignment to Committee. So at this time, for item 2, 22510A1, Resolution to Include the Observance of Eid at Fithor and Eid al-Ahdha in the SFUSD Academic and Instructional Calendars, sponsored, authored by Commissioner Alexander, I would like to allow five minutes of public comment, generally, again, for colleagues for introduction. We do not have extensive dialogue, discussion amongst board members, and would like to open it up for public comment at this time. So I'd like to call, because we are limiting, we do have five minutes for Introduction to Committee, I do want to acknowledge that there are six speaker, or, excuse me, no, it's actually five speakers. So we should be within that one-minute time. So Tima Hindawa, Alita Fisher, Chris Claus, Wasim Hajj, and Sharif Zakut. I also noticed that there are four public speakers, so I would encourage if public speakers, have you spoken earlier this evening, to yield your time to speakers who have not spoken this evening that are virtual as well.
My name is Alita Fisher. On behalf of the Mission High School PTSA, I cede my time and approve.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Matthews. My name is Sharif Zakut. I'm with the Arab Resource and Organizing Center. Thank you so much for adding this item to the agenda. It's been long overdue. As we've named time and time again, it's really important for our families that SF Unified recognize Eid. As we've been saying for the last few months now, what we were afraid of last week, we were actually able to celebrate Eid with our families, and we had a beautiful event in the Tenderloin, where we were also able to uplift the mothers in the TL. And we realized that AP testing, as well as California standardized testing, was happening last week. And so because Eid was not actually just named to our students, now it's on the teachers and families to be able to go back and make up those tests. And so we really just want to emphasize the importance of recognizing Eid. This is more than just an equitability issue. This is also just making sure that we have access, especially for our families who are coming from occupied or war-torn countries, and really are struggling with just basic things like being listed as white instead of having our own Middle Eastern category. And so SF Unified has had a legacy of uplifting things like language programs. We want to continue this legacy of uplifting our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the school board. My name is Wasim Hajj. I'm a case manager with the Arab Resource and Organizing Center. You know, I'm here today, I support all of the teachers and educators who've been advocating for, you know, educational justice today. One important piece of educational justice, we feel, is the recognition of Eid, both Eid al-Fathar and Eid al-Ahdha, on the calendar as soon as possible. As Sharif said, we had this beautiful community event, and people just kept coming up to us. They know that we've been pushing for this, they've been following it closely, and they've just been asking us, when is Eid going to be recognized? When is Eid going to be recognized? It's something our communities have been asking for quite a long time, years even, and now you guys finally have an opportunity to make our communities whole and recognize our holidays. It means a lot to our people, and thanks so much for the consideration. We look forward to the next meeting.
Hello, hi, my name is Dima Hindawi. Thank you again, echoing what other folks said as well. Thank you for having us on the agenda today. As I've mentioned before, I'm also an alumni of SFUSD. And we also talked about the event we had the other day, which was super exciting, and I was talking to a lot of community members about it. And some people were like, oh, like New York, like having Eid resolution. And it was really sweet, it had a lot of excitement. A lot of people were talking about how they like, their kids have to take notes to school, something that I experienced. And just like the simplicity of it, also, they loved the representation of it. And some people already knew about the resolution, and were really excited. And then some people were like, wow, that's cool. So really excited to see where this goes, and echoing what has been said earlier. And thank you for moving us up on the agenda as well. Thank you.
Speaking not for myself, but for educators that couldn't stay this late, a lot of folks at my site support celebrating Eid in order to support our students, but also to support our fellow educators who are Muslim, who celebrate and who fast during Ramadan and who celebrate Eid. This needs to be recognized, it needs to be supported. We have holidays around other religions' holidays. We should celebrate this as well. Thank you.
Well, we'll be taking virtual public comment at this time.
Because we're limiting public comment to five minutes, because it is Introduction to Committee, I want to have speakers who haven't spoken tonight, please.
Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches. Por favor levante su mano si quiere hacer un comentario público. Tenemos un máximo de cinco minutos. Gracias.
All right. If you want to focus on the subject, you can raise your hand. If you want to debate, you can raise your hand. Since we only have five minutes, we will only talk to people who have spoken before. Thank you. Kiki?
Yes. Good evening.
Yes.
Good evening, you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Christine Cordero, and for the past 11 years, I have been the program manager for the Arab Mothers ESL Life Skills Program in the Tenderloin. I have worked extensively with this community and with these people whom I hold very dear to my heart, through their many issues of, you know, adjusting to life in a new country. On this particular issue, however, I must respectfully disagree. I do not support this resolution. It was been, it's been poorly drafted. It has not even been thoroughly thought through. The way the resolution has been drafted is mixing apples and oranges, conflating federally recognized holidays with cultural holidays with religious holidays. And Eid, quite frankly, is a purely religious holiday. And contrary to what a previous speaker just said, we do not celebrate other religious holidays, either on the federal level or the state level. There are many other logistical problems with this. You're asking for holidays. I really respectfully disagree with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Lam, that was the five minutes. I don't know if you're extending it a little bit for virtual?
We have three speakers that haven't spoken tonight, so let's extend three minutes.
Apologies if I'm not pronouncing this correctly, Humza Siddiki?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi all, my name is Humza Siddiki. I'm an organizer and activist and a student from the Mission District here in San Francisco. Today, I stand in solidarity with my fellow organizers at AROC, the Arab Resource and Organizing Center, who you just listened to, to support the recognition of Eid al-Fathar and Eid al-Ahdha as official holidays in SFUSD. Contrary to the cynicism in the last message, community members like mine are looking for a specific assurance that their sense of security and their belonging matters in the city, that their contributions to themselves and others mean something, and that someone will stand beside them. And I'm committed to my belief that at the essence of this assurance is the recognition of our community members in the public arena, that their story is a part of the larger story of San Francisco, especially at a time that has reigned hardship and loss on millions worldwide. Historically excluded communities cannot only see themselves suffering, receive empty homilies, or worse, the lie that they're just too insufficient to be recognized, lest they come to believe themselves only worthy of that pain or only celebrated when that pain is overcome. This resolution will pick our communities up, fuel a faith in the future, and give our communities a sense of not only what to say no to, but what to say yes to and what to affirm, which is this basic idea, respect for personhood. The respect for personhood that shapes a child's character, builds their core, teaches them to trust life, enter it with confidence, with hope, and with determination. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Lara Kiswani. Lara?
Hi, everybody. This is Lara Kiswani, the Executive Director of the Arab Resource and Organizing Center. Just want to echo support for this resolution. I'm so glad it's finally on the agenda, and I want to say that I do hope that we don't stall it any further, that we don't allow Islamophobic and racist rhetoric and tropes to continue to impact our community, especially in this process, as we just heard from the previous speaker who spoke to what I would call Islamophobic and racist tropes as it relates to Eid and the needs of the Arab and Muslim community. I do hope that we center the voices of Arabs and Muslims and other people of color. Looking forward to working with you all on this, and hope that it's an easy, smooth process, as it should be, it's a straightforward item, and I do hope that our community can celebrate with you all very soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. President Lam, that does conclude public comment for this item.
I see one more.
Julie?
Hi, my name's Julie Roberts-Fong. I'm speaking in support of the resolution. I'm glad to see that it has been introduced tonight. I also got to participate in the Eid and Mother's Day event on Sunday, and my favorite part was talking to youth who've been a part of really leading in this effort by starting a petition to celebrate Eid's, and also to the way that the students who've testified here, who are so empowered and so proud and so fulfilled to see that they were able to do something good for their community. I also want to speak against the idea that this is, that celebrating, recognizing an Eid holiday is somehow different than organizing our entire calendar around Christmas and other religious holidays. I'm fully in support of this resolution, and I hope that the board will vote in support in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. That now concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. If I do not hear otherwise from legal counsel, I will refer this item to the Rules Committee. We are now going back to our Agenda I, Special Order of Business, Item 1, 22510S01, Resolution approving the form and authorizing the execution delivery of a bond purchase agreement with a revised present value savings threshold for not to exceed $145 million of general obligation refunding bonds.
I'm sorry, President Lam, do we move the last item? I'll move it. Second. Thank you.
Thank you. I also like to ask for a motion in a second on this Special Order of Item Business.
So moved to the second.
Dr. Matthews, I'd like to introduce designee to read the recommendation into the record.
Thank you, President Lam. Reading the recommendation into the record will be our Chief Financial Officer, Megan Wallace.
Thank you, and good evening. This evening, staff is requesting the board to adopt the proposed resolution approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement with a revised present value savings for the San Francisco Unified School District general obligation refunding bonds. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Colleagues sitting, actually, let me go to public comment first. Do I see any public comment? Seeing none. Any online?
There's no virtual public comment at this time.
Okay. Comments from board members? Commissioner Shu?
If I remember correctly, this particular refunding bond was tied to the sales of the Series C of the 2016 bond? So, and I don't see that one here. What is the relationship?
Yes, so Commissioner, I was just here in April requesting board approval of an updated preliminary official statement. This is tied to that same refunding bond. Just now that we're getting closer to going out to the market for this refunding effort, our team is looking at current interest rates and anticipating that we won't achieve the same savings that we had originally hoped. So the primary intent of this item is to give a lower threshold for us of savings for us to move forward. It had previously stated 8% required savings. Now we're lowering it to 3%, which is the board's policy. We do hope to have more savings than that, but, so this is the same refunding bond that I had previously brought forward to the board.
So is it tied to the Series C? The $284 million sales?
No, so the $284 million is actually our new money bond, and this is for prior issuances, where we're taking, we're going back to the market, we're basically, we're seeking a lower interest rate on prior bond issuances.
So it's not tied to, that's a separate matter, that has already gone ahead?
We're preparing to move forward with both the new money bond and the refunding bond. This week, we're starting with the pre-pricing, we'll move forward with pricing this week. So we're trying to make sure that we're successful when we go to the market with this, with this adjustment of lowering the savings threshold.
So the only reason this is here now is because it's board policy that we have to reapprove it when the threshold is lowered by X amount?
Correct. The board had previously authorized us to move forward with the refunding with a minimum of 8%. However, because of the changing market, really, it's However, because of the changing market, really it's a global issue that we're not anticipating as much savings. So we're lowering, lowering that threshold so that we can make sure that we're meeting that requirement. We were uncertain that we would be able to achieve 8% savings. So this is really just an effort to have more flexibility when we go forward with the refunding.
So why, I'm curious, and again, I'm relatively new with this. It's not my background. I'm the educator here, so, but I'm curious why we asked the board to approve 8% previously? Is it not, rather than the 3%, which is the board policy?
I, I think it was simply that we were more optimistic when I first brought this forward to the board in October. We ended up delaying moving forward with both the new money sale and with the refunding, just for various reasons. But now where we are in time and with changes in the market, and also previously it had been a forward refunding, which meant that we were going out earlier. You know, before we were, it was sort of forecasting the timing of the refunding, locking in a lower price before we could actually officially do the refunding. Now we're within that official window of the standard refunding. So those are the two things that really changed the timing. It's no longer a forward, advanced refunding, and the market has changed and we're less optimistic about that savings. Still hoping for perhaps around 5%, but we figured that it would be best to tie it to the board policy, just to make sure that we have that flexibility.
Okay. Seeing additional comments? Row call vote, please.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Student Delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Xu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yeah. Thank you. I want to recognize that our student delegates like to excuse them for the rest of the evening.
President Lamb, I'm sorry, there was a mistake in your script about the referral to which committees the Eid resolution needed to go to. It actually, I don't know, General Counsel would like to address that?
Sure. Our recommendation, President Lamb, is that it go to curriculum for the curriculum component and also budget.
Okay, so it stands corrected then. It is being advanced to those two committees.
Thank you.
Student delegates Lamb or Liang, would you want to say any parting words for this evening?
Have a good night, everyone. And yeah, Agnes, can you unmute now?
Yeah, yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing. Good luck and yeah, have a good rest for your night.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
They are tired. They have been working hard in their exams as they both are graduating seniors and are having just a few more weeks before they graduate with us. So at this time, I'd like to move to our second item, the 22510S02 External Auditor Financial Performance Audit Reports for Prop A 2003, 2006, 2011, and 2016 School Facilities Bonds with the fiscal year 2017-18. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
I'd like to call on Superintendent to introduce the designee.
The designee for this item will be our Chief Facilities Officer, Don Kamalnathan.
Commissioners, we're here tonight to recommend that the Board of Education accept and approve the external audit of the districts 2003, 2006, 2011, and 2016 Proposition A Financial and Performance Audit Reports for fiscal year 2017-2018 as prepared by Vavranek, Trinh Day, and Company. I also wanted to ask the Commissioner if we are calling both items simultaneously since they're essentially the same presentation. Now we'll read the second recommendation into the.
Okay, we will combine them, so I will call upon 22510S03 External Auditor Form and Finance Audit Reports for Proposition A 2003, 2006, 2011, 2016 School Facilities Bond Fiscal Year 2018-2019. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. We would also like to ask that you accept and approve the external audit of the districts 2003, 2006, 2011, and 2016 Proposition A Financial and Performance Audit Reports for fiscal year 2018-19 as prepared by Aid Bailey, LLP. Commissioners, thank you very much. We're going to do a very brief presentation this evening, tonight to talk about these two particular audits. I'm joined tonight by Nathan Edelman, who is our, represents our auditor, Aid Bailey, and I will provide a very quick overview and then turn it over to him to walk through the high-level content of the audits. The headlines here are that we are required by law to conduct annual audits of our General Obligation Bond Program, not only a financial audit, but also a performance audit. We are also required to have a standing CBAC in good order, and we have, again, reconstituted our CBAC this summer. They met and spent a lot of time working and discussing these audits and asking great questions. And we ended up in a place where CBAC did adopt a resolution recommending that the board accept both of these audits. As you're aware from our earlier conversation, we are still reviewing the fiscal year 2020 audit with CBAC, and the FY 2021 audit is still in preparation. I think the overall headline that I would like to emphasize is that there are no material audit findings around our General Obligation Bond Program. And so while there are best practice recommendations, which we, again, accept and enthusiastically embrace as something to work on the next year, fundamentally, there are, you know, no material findings with respect to our, or I should say, material adverse findings with respect to our bond program. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Edelman.
All right, thank you. Again, my name is Nathan Edelman with Aid Bailey, and I am the independent external auditor, actually. Go to the next slide, please. Oh, because maybe it's a few slides. So will you, I guess, keep going, please? Oh, yeah, here we go. And this is my, my turn. Next slide, please. I'll keep it brief, but scope of the audit, auditors, I look at myself as the messenger. We ask questions, we, we look at the documents, and then we form these reports, really to just report back. And it is, it's folks within the district, it is management that is really responsible for implementing the bond program, for compliance with these, the rules and regulations. And they get credit or blame, I guess, if you have a, we'll say, good or bad audit. Next slide, please. So you have, actually, in this packet, you have a lot of audits, actually covering two fiscal years. There are financial statements as well as these Proposition 39 Performance Audits, one for each of the years. These have been discussed and, discussed with the CBAC in much more detail. You're going to receive the high-level executive summary. Really, the scope of the audit, the financial statements, each of the bond programs has a balance sheet income statement, almost like it's its own separate entity. The audit scope there is, do those financial statements comply with the accounting standards? The performance audit, probably a little more interesting, especially to the CBAC. And that is, you know, are the expenditures of bond funds compatible with the allowable uses? Do they comply with Proposition 39? Next, next slide, please. And you can skip this one, too. So the primary objectives of the performance audit, the scope of the performance audit, and this is something that is, this is set by the State of California. This Education Audit Appeals Panel lists out these specific scope requirements, which is really ensure that expenditures are listed projects on each of the authorizations, ensure that they are, you know, capital construction projects. And then salaries that are charged to the bond fund need to be consistent with this attorney general opinion, which says that, you know, you can charge salaries to the bond program as long as there is a direct nexus. It's people who are, folks who are working directly in support of bond activities. Next, next slide, please. And the conclusions, high-level conclusions within the performance report, but one, expenditures aligned with the voter-approved project listing, which really means that there were no deviations, no, we'll call them findings, no instances, instances of non-compliance that were identified. Payroll expenditures similarly consistent with the attorney general opinion, which means that, you know, there were no exceptions in the audit. Evidence of compliance with public bidding and procurement requirements, change order to show compliance with district policy as well as public law provisions. Probably the only, I guess we'll call it finding, the only exception for 2019, which I think everyone knows about, has been resolved by today as we saw the presentation from the CBAC. But for 2019 report, the district CBAC members reached their term limits at the beginning of that 1819 fiscal year. And so there was a, a period where there, there was not a CBAC in place, I think. Actually, next, next slide, please, and you can skip this one. As for the financial statements, balance sheets, income statements, kind of three big takeaways. First is opinion on the financial statements. There's a couple of pages on there, but there's a paragraph that says, "Opinion. Financial statements referred to above present fairly, you know, financial position of each of the bond funds." That's, I'm calling it unmodified or clean opinion. There were no internal control deficiencies related to the financial statements. And then compliance, there's a government auditing standards opinion. If there was non-compliance with the performance audit, that could result in, you know, a financial impact to the district, that would be called out, would be required to be called out in that compliance opinion, and, and that is not the case. So to say clean, I guess, unmodified compliance opinion. So next slides on here are really just me to ask, providing an opportunity to ask questions. So that can, that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it over to the, to you folks.
I'd like to offer for public comment.
My computer's frozen, but I'm.
Always at the wrong time.
Hi, this is Interbird. There's one person. His name is Greg Chopskey.
Thank you. Why don't you go ahead, Greg?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi, Greg Chopskey, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I'm a little shocked to hear that, that this is so-called clean audit and whatnot. The fact of the matter is, is there wasn't a CBAC for three years. There wasn't audits for three years. And this is, is absolutely gaslighting on, on the fact that, that the district spent money without the required statutory oversight. This is an absolutely shocking thing. I can't believe I'm hearing the auditor so casually saying everything's okay. And I gotta be honest, we, we have to take a hard look at ourselves because we don't know what happened with $744 million. So I, I really would hope in transparency and, 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 and being truthful to ourselves that we, we face this reality. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes virtual public comment.
Okay, colleagues, like to open up our comments? Vice President Bogus?
I have a question that's a little bit separate from kind of the audit process that happened, which seemed to kind of show that the majority of things were in compliance or the things that were out of compliance got into compliance. Is there kind of a broader assessment about kind of the judgment decisions made by the district in kind of selecting the projects, the way they were executed and things like that? And where would kind of our ability to kind of gauge that kind of assessment separate from kind of whether we, we checked all the boxes?
Yeah, so the audit works like an Excel formula. It takes inputs, the accounting records, what did the district do with the funds during the time period? And then has an objective outcome, which is, you know, do those expenditures comply with the allowable use? And it's kind of, you know, yes or no, it's black and white. So there's tons of other questions, operational-type questions or things that could be subjective that wouldn't be noted through this, through these procedures.
For that, and I guess I'm wondering if staff has any thoughts or how, like how we're internally kind of assessing whether or not this is the way we wanted it to go or not? And kind of how we use that information as our future planning?
Commissioner, it has been, I think, for me personally, since I joined the district, an evolving conversation with my own leadership team within the bond program. And we have spent quite a bit of time reflecting on the lessons learned of our implementation of the 2016 bond to date, as well as the earlier GO bonds. I think we have had a lot of public conversation, especially during, in response to Buena Vista Horace Mann's advocacy around the selection of projects. And I think that the capital condition assessment that we are implementing right now is a widely accepted best practice for thinking about a capital portfolio or, you know, a real estate portfolio, the size and complexity of ours and the kinds of capital needs we have. So I would just point as to that as an important step forward. And then after that, using that data in collaboration with the Board of Education to have open policy conversations about what our goals are, and then developing scenarios that respond to those goals. We, we have also had two earlier conversations, especially with the arrival of our new bond program manager, Lucina Berry, who has really gotten right into the details of our bond program, that there is work to be done around how we scope our projects to begin with and that a lot of the change order differences that have been noted, not only by the public, but by myself and other members of our team, have more to do, in my opinion, with kind of a rush to scope projects in the beginning than they do reflect some sort of material failure to deliver projects adequately. And in fact, kind of represents the opposite of fixing things on the back end that maybe we should have been more realistic about on the front end. And so as we go into bond planning, those are lessons learned that are top of mind for me and our team as we think about what we want to do differently for scoping projects.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I had a follow-up to that, so this might be outside the confines of a traditional, the input of the audit. Was following up on CBAC's recommendation around the procedures and policies around how do we monitor the scope of change? And, you know, are we going to be exploring? How do we monitor that? What kind of percentage of threshold? I think it's really helpful because given, you know, for example, public works projects, right? Think that we thought we're gonna cost a particular amount and timeframe has actually doubled in cost. So I think, I'd love to have you explain a bit more than what are those next steps around some of these operationalizing recommendations?
Yeah, well, absolutely. I think, for one, we actually do monitor this data relentlessly. So it is analyzed, and it is one of the main things that both our construction management consultant firms, as well as our program management consulting firm, AECOM, do for us as a team. And that's kind of an important checks and balance. So we have our own program manager and staff, and then we have consultants who are also providing and kind of going through this data as the project is delivered and reporting on that to both myself and our bond program manager, Lucina Berry. I think what we've noticed is, again, one, I'll emphasize again, that we need to change the way we're scoping projects and to do more work upfront to define goals for each of these projects and what we want to accomplish with them. and to do more work upfront to define goals for each of these projects and what we want to accomplish with them. And I think, you know, I think that will make a big step forward. I think 10% is a pretty normal baseline measure that is, you know, considered acceptable with the industry. And then oftentimes in my experience, when you have unforeseen site conditions, you have very old sites that no one has touched for a long time. You will see numbers that trend above that. But I think the point of the recommendation from CBAC and also our auditing firm is that you think carefully and are constantly analyzing and reflecting on the source of those change orders. Like what is the source of that? So when you see, for example, when I worked on Mission Dolores Park, we had dramatic swings as, for example, the stream turned out not to be where we all thought it was underneath the ground. And that you can note that and observe that as you report to the board and request additional funds. That's a real difference from scope creep or, for example, an errors and emissions driven change order. So we do collect that data and analyze it. And I think that we actually need to also be better about communicating to the board as we move forward with these requests about what is the source of those changes? Or I should say the driver.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander.
I had a different question kind of about the auditing process. And I guess I'm still a little confused as to why we're just getting the 2017-18 audit now. So I don't know, Mr. Edelman, is that right? Yeah. How long have you been our auditor for this project? These projects?
For me, 2022 would be my sixth year.
Okay, so I'm curious about your experience. I mean, did you, was it strange to have this long of a delay? Did you know that the CBAC wasn't meeting? I guess I'm just trying to understand the role of the auditor in this, kind of in kind of keeping us accountable to what we need to be doing.
Oh, yeah, so the 20, is it 18, 18 and 19 that we have? That report was discussed with the CBAC at the time. That report had been, I guess, completed for a while. And then I don't, I can't speak about how the process goes to become agenda is for the board. And then the 2019 report, there was no CBAC. And that was also during COVID and lots of other just delays for everything. And so there is a catch up process that is going through now to try and get things back to their historical schedules.
So you all had actually completed the 2017-18 audit? And had you sent it to district staff?
Yeah, I don't, I think.
I'm just trying to understand.
Commissioner, yeah, I'm happy to also step in here. So there was an audit that was completed. It was sent to CBAC. I think there was a preliminary discussion, but CBAC then fell out of that the terms all expired. And so then we went through a period of about, we've talked about this with different pieces, but I'm happy to repeat. So then we spent about a year where there was a leader, there was a leadership transition as the former chief facilities officer left the district. There was an interim chief facilities officer. Then I joined, right? So a lot of things are piling up on top of each other and, which is not an excuse, but it is just a description of what happened. And that then also audits are prepared on a lag. So from the fiscal year of which they conclude. So by the time we're completing the FY19 fiscal year audit, we're also then heading into a period where we are needing to reconstitute CBAC and then around the corner from the pandemic.
Yeah, that's totally, no, I understand. I guess my question was more around kind of the role of the auditor and that. Like I'm a little bit surprised that alarm bells weren't coming off from the auditor. I guess I'm trying to understand like what the role of the auditor and how do, so do we select? Seems like we've had the same auditor for a while. Like, how do we select auditors to make sure that they're independent? And that they're also saying if they, if they've submitted something to us and haven't heard back, you know, they ought to be coming to the superintendent and the board and saying, hey, what's up with this? Even if, right, I get that there was an issue within facilities before your time.
Yeah. I am actually, I would defer to Deputy Superintendent Miang Lee on the selection of the auditors. But I believe there is an RFP conducted every few years.
That's correct. What Chief Kamala Nathan just said is correct. So for our, I Bailey and previously Maverick Trine Day, as Chief Kamala Nathan mentioned, has been our auditor for the general obligation bond program audits, as well as our annual financial statements and a couple of other revenue measures for several years. So I will share that. And I believe you will see this, if you haven't already seen this commissioners, some information in response to a question that Commissioner Matomadi has asked. That we, this is, this was already underway. I just don't know if the report has been provided to commissioners yet or not. We will be doing an RFP for audit services. And Chief Financial Officer Megan Wallace is here. Please jump in, Megan, if I get any of this wrong. That is planned for, to take place in the 2223 fiscal year. And for overall financial statements, that would be to conduct our audit for the FY2223 year. So we do have separate engagements for each of the specific programs, including the general obligation bonds. So that scope of work will not necessarily extend. The RFP would not necessarily apply to all of the different measures. I believe there is a latitude to select auditors individually for each measure. So and Chief Wallace, if I have misspoken there, then please, okay, thank you. I'm getting the thumbs up from Chief Wallace.
Yeah, that's really helpful. And I guess just as a sort of comment, I mean, I guess for me, and I would love, I don't know if my colleagues feel differently, but I would love to have an auditor that really is going to hold us accountable. So again, what Chief Kamala Nathan described was unfortunate around the facilities transition and all that. But my hope would be that's the whole point of having an auditor is that someone says, hey, you know, if we've prepared an audit, we've given it to staff and nothing happens, that there's some, you know, that to me seems like a basic red flag that ought to be included in an audit, right? So anyway, I don't know if that makes sense, but I think we need help. We want to be held accountable as a public agency. And so we want to make sure that our auditor understands that that's part of their role.
Additional comments? Yeah, I think as a follow up to Deputy Superintendent Lee, being able to see what those packages are as far as our auditors for what scope and expiration. I think just even a summary, it could be a follow up would be particularly helpful as we are wanting to strive for that transparency. And also for our own, you know, as John Gray of School Services gave us that training recently, I think it's really important as our governing body, in particular on the fiscal accountability side. So look forward to that follow up. And perhaps Commissioner Alexander through Budget and Business Services, I don't know again, how appropriate it is to follow up with budget staff, that'd be helpful. Right, at this time, I'd like to have roll call vote for both items 22510 S02 for the audit fiscal year 2017, 2018, as well as the fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Thank you, President Lamb. And special orders, items two and three, Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus, Vice President Bogus.
Yes.
Commissioner Shu.
Yes.
Commissioner Matomadi.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward.
Yes.
President Lamb.
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. It is now 10 o'clock, so I'd like to have a motion in a second to extend our board meeting beyond 10 o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
No objection, consensus. Okay, we have now exceeded the 10 o'clock. All right. Item number four, 22510 S04, resolution to adopt proposed decision in office of administrative hearing case number 22030651 to rescind certain preliminary layoff notices and to issue final layoff notices. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
Second.
Dr. Matthews, to introduce it, does he need?
Introducing this resolution into the record will be our head human resources officer, Kristin Bajure.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Bajure. I'm your head human resources officer, and I'm joined by my colleague, Anne Marie Gordon, who you all know. And we're here to talk to you about the layoffs and some other staffing processes. And I want to note that based on some feedback that I received this afternoon, I've added one slide and hidden another to make this presentation a little bit more intelligible. So my deck differs slightly from the one posted on the website, so I'll upload it tomorrow. Okay, then if you can go to the next slide as a reminder, and if you can just animate. There we go. I lead the Human Resources Department, charged with recruiting, hiring, supporting, developing, and retaining a racially and otherwise diverse workforce set up to ensure that every day we provide each and every student the quality instruction, equitable support necessary to thrive in the 21st century. And it's our job to make sure that we have a balance between the number of positions and the number of employees so that we don't end up understaffed or overstaffed. When I talked with you previously in March about this balance, we were projecting the reductions that you can see on this slide right now as maximum position reductions or layoffs in each of these job categories. So this is what we shared in March. And the next slide is showing you our current and actual need for layoffs. You can see, for example, that we projected a maximum layoff of 151 credentialed educators. We will issue final layoff notices to five of those educators because we have no vacancies in those credential areas. And those are four JROTC teachers and one Japanese language teacher. You can also see that we will need to lay off 15 administrators, although all of them have already been or will be rehired into vacant positions. I've listed here that we're closing three senior leadership positions, one deputy superintendent position and two chief positions. Though these are, these are not resulting in laid off employees. These are, these are employees that are leaving and therefore we're closing these positions. And finally, I'm listing here the layoffs of SEIU and Local 21, our International Federation of Professional Technicians and Engineers employees. And there will be some additional layoffs of civil service employees, though these are not yet, the process is still underway, so we don't have those final numbers yet. So you might be asking yourself, why did we project a maximum of 311 layoffs and only end up laying, needing to lay off 27, 20 certificated and seven civil service? So you might remember that in SFUSD, we believe in and deeply value site based budgeting because we want school communities who are closest to students to make budget and staffing decisions to best serve those students. And those budget and staffing plans are submitted by March 25th, but were required by the state to notify employees about their employment status by March 15th. So that means we have to use a variety of data sources to make our best estimates about position reductions until we have actual data, which we get in April. So you can see we're using retirements and resignations and historical attrition and enrollment projections, current vacancies, central office reductions. All of that leads into our best guess. But in a year in which we have $125 million structural deficit, we take a very conservative approach, not relying on hoped for resignations and retirements to accommodate closed positions when estimating a potential reduction in force. So I think on the next slide, yeah, there we go. So we committed to closing 166 positions in our budget balancing plan, equaling roughly $15 million of spending reduction. And we have closed all of those positions. But we've been able to accommodate all of the educators leaving those positions, educators and leaders leaving those positions into our current vacancies, thus making the need for layoffs unnecessary for almost all employees. Unfortunately, we don't have or anticipate vacancies for the JROTC teachers or the one Japanese language teacher necessitating the layoff of those employees. But should any of those positions open, we will recall those laid off teachers for the next 39 months. So what we're asking of you tonight is to approve the resolution to adopt the proposed decision, to rescind certain preliminary layoff notices, that means most of them, and to issue final layoff notices for a few. And I thought I would also just provide an update on the analysis of our central office as we committed to doing at the December 14th board meeting. We set out to answer the question listed on this next slide. There it is. Can SFUSD staff and organize central administration differently to further reduce the district's costs while still maintaining its legal obligations and essential services? So just wanted to share that we completed phase one of three phases, answering this question through 38 interviews. We developed scenarios for how we might reorganize senior leadership. Dr. Matthews made changes that were reflective of the large turnover that we're currently experiencing in senior and school leadership. And we will begin phase two of this three-phase process in June with Harvey Rose, who will conduct a comparative analysis of SFUSD's central office as compared to other districts of similar size. So what happens next? Where we're going from here? Ideally, if you approve this, then we're going to rescind the preliminary layoff notices to all employees not listed for actual layoff and send final layoff notices to the 20 certificated employees who will be laid off. We will call back those certificated employees who receive final layoff notices as soon as a position in their credential area becomes available. That's 24 months for probationary teacher and 39 months for permanent teachers. We will continue to hire for the remaining and upcoming vacancies that we are likely going to still see throughout the spring and summer. And in the spirit of continuous improvement, we will be learning from the challenges that we experienced this time around to improve staffing processes for future years. That's all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open for public comment. I have two and I'll call Ponto. Let's have Josephine Zhao and Selena Chu. And then we'll have President Corral go afterwards.
Thank you, HR, thank you, board members. This is a much better news than we anticipated. Really appreciate for the effort. I'm still seeing like four JROTC member and one Japanese teacher. Hopefully you guys find positions to retain them. It is not easy to have our teachers spend so much time and devoted to our school district. We can, should try everything we can to retain them. Thank you.
Hi, this is Selena Chu again. Thank you for actually being here and listening to our families and students and just everyone in San Francisco. Everyone, including myself, we want the school district to work. We want the public school system to work. So I'm glad you, you know, you took considerations and look at the people who came out today earlier, which is something I missed. Someone told me there was a lot of folks coming out to voice for their teachers for, you know, the quality of education that our student, you know, deserve. So please look into all options to keep as many teachers as we can because it's painful that we're going through the pandemic and then we're also losing teachers at the same time. As everything reopens, there will be more kids coming back. We're building trust, so we need to, we need to provide the service they deserve. Thank you.
Good evening, Cassandra Curial, President of UASF. I trust that you all will pass and take this recommendation. Of course, this is not just near and dear to our heart, but also an actual requirement of functioning in our schools. Of grave concern is the coming vacancies and potentially heading off so many of the exodists that people had planned. This goes a long way towards that effort and making sure that folks know that they are secured and that they can remain, if not within their own school community, within the greater San Francisco Public Unified School District, where they may be able to engage with the same communities they hoped to have served when they entered into the profession. I would like to name that so much of this stress and strife that we attempted to curtail starting in November with this is still very much real for students and families who are still advocating for JROTC and for an increased Japanese program. And the point to which I'd like to really hammer in is that the district should have a plan now and enacted and enactable ongoing for an increased effort in increasing enrollment by having a robust strategy itself. I know this firsthand at a school site that had so much influx at Visitation Valley Middle School, where our principal worked with teachers and parents, to create a plan to go out and increase enrollment in the following year. We said, we saw that. We made an organizing plan to make sure that our school had the students from our feeder schools signing up. This is entirely possible. The building trust is very true, both with our educators and with the school community and bringing students to our high-quality and excellent public school system. Thank you.
I'd like to call Claudia Anderson, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Matthews, commissioners, and staff.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Wong, co-executive director of UASF. I'm here to support my members and my colleague.
So my position with UASF is supporting central office certificated administrators. And we're here because what you have presented to you now is a list of certificated administrators slated for layoff. What's going to be presented to you a little later in this meeting is a list of certificated administrators for appointment. Order of operations matters. Most of the names for this layoff list are from one division, Student Family Services Division, and several of these layoff names are going to be represented to you on the appointment list. We're here to point out that the district's action of laying these members off as administrators, citing an administrative law judge's decision that they may do this, they may move forward based on lack of funding, is not justified, and it also has a negative impact on our members. These administrators are being laid off as administrators effective 6/30/22, and then several of them are being brought back as administrators on 7/1/22. The layoffs, according to the district's legal department, terminates their current contracts. These are, some are mid-three-year contracts, and others, it's a matter of sequence of contracts leading to a three-year contract. That's why, when you see the list for appointments, you are going to see that they're all one-year appointments. And we're here to say that, A, there's no break in service for these administrators, and B, most of them are returning to the same positions, the same classifications, the same division that they are now being laid off for. So we would argue that there is no rationale based on funding or lack of funding for the removal of these employees. We also allege that the program administrator positions, that people on that list are also being negatively impacted, not so much by budget, but by structural changes, and that these members should therefore be protected by our Article 5.3.3 of our contract, which says that their salary should be guaranteed for the duration of their contract. We ask that you look at the intent and the impact of these actions. We ask that you seriously question and consider rescinding these layoffs as unnecessary and unfair. Thank you very much.
Public comment, please.
If you'd like to give public comment on this resolution, please raise your hand. You'll have one minute to speak, and we please have that translated in Spanish and Chinese.
Buenas noches, por favor. Levante su mano si requieres un comentario público. Gracias.
Thank you.
Gloria.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. I think that public comment might have been given on this employee earlier this evening, but I'm just learning about the layoff of a staff member at Leonard Flynn named Christina Flores. She was given a non-reelect, which came to her on Friday.
I'm sorry to cut you off, Gloria. I do apologize. Right now, we're responding to the presentation we just heard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That does conclude our virtual public comment for this item. At this time, comments from board members? Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you. Overall, really, a better picture is being painted today than two months ago, so thank you for all the hard work. I just am wondering if you have a response to UA's concerns regarding members being essentially laid off one day and then being brought back the next day and their contracts being modified? Can you respond to that?
Yes, so specifically in the department that UASF was talking about, because of the reductions in allocations to that department, they did a massive reorganization of the work. And they determined that the positions were going to be different enough, again, the reorganization, they were going to be different enough, that they couldn't just slide existing employees into new positions. Had to actually close all the positions and then rethink how they were going to organize the work, and then rewrite positions, and then hire the people, hire the employees into those new positions. And the legal department advised us that because of those significant shifts, it had to be a layoff and then a rehire. That's my best attempt.
That's very, the only thing I would add to that is, this is consistent with our past practice with UASF, which is when a member moves into a new job, they start a new one-year contract, and these are all new jobs because of the massive reorganization that happened in SFSD. And this practice was also specifically addressed by the administrative law judge and approved.
I guess the difference is that when that happens, it's usually because somebody's leaving one position, not being laid off. They're, for example, leaving, being an elementary school principal and going to a middle school assistant principal. And then, of course, the contract is essentially be done because of that. But in this case, people are being laid off and then given an opportunity for a different job. And that's affecting, I guess, compensation in other ways for them as well.
I don't actually think it's affecting compensation, Commissioner Sanchez. It does affect the term of their contract. But as with the example you just mentioned, these are new jobs with new job duties, and members were invited and did apply and interview for the positions. So based on that, but you are right, we have not undergone this type of unprecedented reorganization before.
Mr. President Bogus.
I was wondering if you could address the situation regarding the misclassified employees who were noticed that they were going to be laid off, and then they corrected for us that we made a mistake. I guess I'm just kind of curious, what safeguards weren't in place, I guess, like to catch that? And I guess, how confident are we with kind of all the other kind of classifications that we have that everyone is in the right spot and they're going to be treated appropriately as we move forward?
Yeah, so I guess the general answer to this is that we haven't conducted a layoff since 2013, and there's nobody working in HR who was working, nobody in leadership in HR that was in leadership in HR in 2013. So we're not really counting on very much institutional memory here on how to do this. And so we missed it. So what happened was, we were, there was a projection to close some Cantonese bilingual classrooms based on projected enrollment. And so we listed those positions on the PKS, in addition to listing multiple subject positions. And we failed to think about the fact that when those Cantonese bilingual teachers, if they were to get laid off, they would default to their multiple subject credential, which would put them into the consolidated pool with other multiple subject teachers. So they have two credentials, authorizations, right? And so we missed that part, and luckily, one of them raised it to the union, the union called us. We immediately called all of them and gave them access to the consolidation pool, but then we also realized that we're not actually going to lay off any, we don't need to lay off any of those people, and so all of them can stay in their classrooms and accept two. And then we made arrangements with those two. We gave them options of where they wanted to be, and they ended up being settled into places where they wanted to be. So it all worked out, but in the future, we're going to be definitely like looking, I mean, hopefully, this is not going to be happening to us every year. Definitely hoping that. But if it does, we got to make sure that we're looking at what underlying credentials anybody on the PKS is holding to see where they, how that might affect their consolidation process.
I appreciate that. I think for me, it's more an issue of, do we have strong systems? Do we have a way to audit our systems? Do we have to wait when our staff catches a problem for us to start fixing it? I think that that's a little bit of the concern for me. It just feels like we don't have safeguards in place. We don't have people who are like double-checking to ensure all these things. I don't know if that's true, but I think that's kind of my feeling from here. And I think, not so much concerned about your ability to fix it after it happens, but how do we actually catch these things before the public is aware that it's a huge issue and then we're trying to play catch-up? And I think, I don't know how we're gauging that. I would be really interested in us having more conversations about that and figuring out what is the appropriate amount of staff we need to ensure that all these things are happening versus us figuring out what staff we need to kind of fix the problem later. I had one additional comment as well. You spoke a little bit about the assessment of central office staff and kind of where we're at in the process and how that's reflective of what you showed us here. I think the concern that I have is, how are we gauging the reductions we're making in central office staff and the amount of work that those people are responsible for delivering and bringing? And so I think I'm still interested in getting a gauge on, understanding we have to make reductions based on our budget outlook, how are we decreasing the amount of work that is in individual areas with these reductions so that we aren't reducing workers, increasing work, and seeing worse outcomes in our schools amongst our staff and with our students? And how are we gauging that and balancing that? And I think I'm just really interested in kind of how are we holding all these different things together as we try to solve this problem?
Yeah, thank you for raising that. We don't want to reduce the number of employees and not reduce the amount of work and just make the existing employees have more work. Definitely don't want to do that. So this is, I would say, a combination of the functional analysis, phase two, combined with a focus on our LCAP priorities, right? Which the LCAP is hopefully intended to help us figure out what are the priorities that we should really make sure that we're doing and what are the things that we're going to have to not do. And frankly, I imagine that we'll be engaged in a lot of conversations about this as we move forward in the functional analysis.
I would add to that. I think there is a third way or an earlier version when we were, as the budget team was presenting to the board, a couple of the slides actually showed with some of the positions that would be eliminated, some of the works that would go away, because we wanted that to be explicit. I think too often, reductions are made with the same amount of work. It's what you're bringing up right now. Reductions are made, but the same amount of work is still left on the table. So I think the team wanted to be very explicit about if these positions go away, which they have, this is the work that's going to be eliminated.
No, I appreciate that. I think the issue that I see, and I think I'm definitely would love to have more conversation kind of going forward in the future, is that we reduce staffing at one level and then work secretly ends up somewhere else, whether it's at a site or like at an individual staff person who ends up filling the gap of what we reduced because the school communities aren't prepared to kind of do without and family's still needed. And I don't know if there's a way that we're able to gauge that or capture that, but I feel like I hear from our union representatives all the time about all the volunteerism and additional work it takes to maintain the status quo. And so I think figuring out how we're gauging that and kind of calculating that into our cost so that we have an accurate reflection of what it takes for us to kind of operate into what we need to. Thank you.
Commissioner Alexander, Ms. Chu.
Thank you so much, Chief Bajure. Yeah, as like others have said, for all your diligent work on this, it means a lot. And it's, I know you've been juggling lots of pieces to get to ensure that as many of our employees can stay as possible, so I really, really appreciate that. You won't be surprised that I want to talk about the upper management issue, and maybe this isn't the time to go into depth on it, because I know some of it actually has to do with non-credentialed employees. But I just wanted to say sort of for the public, like I know it's more than just three. The slide almost made it look like there was just three positions, the deputy and chiefs, and I know there's actually more to it than that in terms of your phase one. So I don't know if you wanted to say more now, or maybe we could do something at the June Budget Committee, but I think it would be good to sort of lay out what's, kind of what has happened in phase one, and then we can share more about the plans for phase two, which, and I should say publicly, gratitude to Supervisor Ronan, who's going to sponsor that from the city side, so that'll be free to the school district to have that, the phase two analysis that Harvey Rose and the budget and legislative analysts will be doing. But so I don't know if you want to share anything else now, or like I said, maybe June, or I don't know, would be appropriate.
Dr. Matthews, do you want to share anything now? What? The functional analysis?
Are you asking just some of the changes or?
Well, I know, I guess what I was saying is, I know that the phase one analysis that's been done and the reductions are more than just those three positions. And so I think it would be good to lay all that out. I mean, for example, I keep asking about directors and managers, and I know some of those positions have in fact been reduced, so they're not credentialed, they don't show up here. So maybe, again, maybe that's a request for, and again, I'd offer June Budget Business Services might be a place we could kind of say, if that's appropriate.
I would definitely prefer to do it there so we could do it in an organized way as opposed to.
Yeah, yeah, perfect, perfect. Thank you.
I have a question on if we approve the layoff notices today of the four JROTC positions. Is it true that we won't actually hand out the notice until May 15? Today's May 10? Just a logistics question.
We have to get them those notices by Friday, the 13th, because the 15th is a Sunday.
Okay, so then what happens when the funding comes through? They have 39 months to hire them back?
So if we open a JROTC position in two weeks, we would call the most senior person on that list of four and ask that person if they would like to come back and take that position. And if we make, if we create multiple positions, then we do that for all the people on the list.
Thank you.
So not to head down a totally different path, but one of the, when I was outside today hearing the Cantonese bilingual teachers speak about their experience in the rehiring process or when the posting of positions, when they become available, and I'm thinking about, you know, enrollment projections for fall and things like that. So is, what is the process, given that we weren't here when we've done this before? What is the process that you're anticipating as far as noticing when positions become available? Do they just get, do they just get bubbled up? Or is there, I guess I just want to understand the process, since I heard that from several different folks that were impacted from what they thought were layoff notices and being able to see what positions were available. Are you following, tracking what I'm asking?
I'm not sure.
Commissioner Tompkins, are you asking if folks on the rehire list have to monitor when positions? So I wondered if that was it. No, we will affirmatively reach out to anybody on the rehire list and inform them that there is a vacancy for which they're qualified. there is a vacancy for which they're qualified and the most senior person and they have a right to it.
I just wanted to thank you, Kristin, for your work, particularly around the bilingual Cantonese speaking educators and teachers, because I was very concerned when I started hearing directly from our teachers as well as then, you know, the emails that followed. I appreciate your response and the tone. I, I don't think I need to explain just to the broader community just how much anxiety, frustration that that caused. And, and I hear you about that we haven't been through it. And I just want to, again, echo what Vice President Bogus has expressed. It is really about, you know, how do we create systems here that go beyond the institutional, you know, history and the knowledge, but then how do we systematize it? So I look forward, and if you have a response around, they called it, Vice President Bogus called it the safeguards, I'm really looking for like institutionalizing those systems so it goes beyond those. And how do we look at, as we modernize those systems so that it can be not an error that you end up having to really, you know, fix in the later? And then that creates, I think, a mistrust. So much of what we've been talking about as we move forward is that trust building. And, and I do think, I just want to express with particularly the multilingual pathways and our bilingual programs, there's a real question about where we are headed as a district with those pathways and programs. And so I'm going to be looking forward with my colleagues to also how that aligns with our LCAP, how we're serving our, our students who are ELs as well as those long-term supports that we must have for our students and our staff that are with those students throughout their education.
Yeah, President Lamb, I went outside earlier to the, to the rally at 4:30 because I was hoping to have a chance to speak to the assembled group. But since you gave me the opportunity now, I'd like to just publicly apologize to the group of the 13 Cantonese bilingual educators who were impacted by that error and the wider population and community of Cantonese bilingual educators. Because I know it had an impact beyond just the 13 who were, who were on the PKS. In HR, we deeply, deeply, deeply value, you saw in our, our charge, right? The, we are, we deeply value the diversity in our educators. We, you know, not only do Chinese students deserve to have Chinese educators and Cantonese bilingual educators, but all of our children in SFUSD deserve to have teachers, educators of different racial backgrounds and language backgrounds. So deeply value our Cantonese bilingual educators. And I'm hoping, you know, I'm kind of here, I'm a long haul kind of employee, been around for like a lot of years. So I'm hoping that one of the safeguards is that I'll be around hopefully the next time we try to do this and we do it and we learn from experience and we do it accurately. I know that's not exactly the system that you both are asking for. But while I don't have a system to, to offer up at the moment, I'm hoping that I'll be here and be able to use this knowledge in the future.
Commissioner Xu, one more. Yeah, just to follow up on that comment, is there a handbook for different procedures?
Not that I know of. I did go to HR school where there was a whole session on this topic. But they definitely don't go into the like detailed information about cross-checking your PKS for multiple credentials, like that, that wasn't quite, they didn't cover that topic. So I relied so much on the legal department here in SFUSD to help us make sure we don't make missteps. And unfortunately, on this one, neither, neither of us caught it. But if, if you all have, if anybody has suggestions for the kinds of safeguards that you have in mind, I would love to be in dialogue about that, because we definitely don't want to, I agree with everything you're saying. We don't want to, we want to prevent, we don't want to, we don't want to make these errors that we have to apologize for, right? We want to do it right.
No, I'm just wondering, for any position that we have, whether it's in HR or any other department, how does somebody know what to do or how we do things here? I mean, I could say that you have an accountant who's an accountant, who knows how to do accounting, but when they come to SFUSD, we do accounting this way. That's what I mean by maybe an SFUSD accounting handbook, right? Or SFUSD HR handbook? If we don't have one, maybe we'll consider drafting one just by writing down everybody's job descriptions or something?
Oh, we have that. We know what everybody's job description. It's just, I think in this case, like we do this rarely enough, luckily, that when there isn't the institutional memory, we don't have like a written down guide of like the exact steps and safeguards to follow when conducting a layoff. But that's a, that's an idea.
Maybe start now.
Yeah, but I, and I would also add in other positions, we have, you heard, the institutional knowledge. So typically, there are people around in other positions who, when we onboard, there are the, the knowledge of the position and procedures. In this case, as you heard, it was 2013. But that isn't, that, that's rarely, that's, that's very rare.
Whether it's rare or not, I think, just from my business world, when you have small companies, you rely on the people to do the work. When you have large companies, you rely on the system to do the work. So I, I think SFUSD would equate to a large company. So if we don't have these systems in place, let's start building them.
So I just want to be really clear that we're talking, right now, we're talking about for layoffs and totally agree for, as we're, for layoffs, absolutely. But I just want to make it, that isn't true throughout the system.
I understand, but since we caught one place that's not there, let's start building that there.
Well, and I, I think it is a challenge of ours, right? I mean, we've had the payroll issue, we've had a lot of systemic failures. Let's, I mean, to, just to be real. And I think, I agree, I think, I know, I've known Chief Bajor for a long time, and I know one of the many strengths you bring is the cultural piece. And I think the cultural piece is really, really important. Like how, like how you've responded to this is exemplary, in my view. Like that's how, and that's going to change culture. And I think we need to lean on experts like, like Commissioner Xu, who may be able to help. Like, and I do think systematizing some of these things that are, that are more procedural, right? Like how we do layoffs is, we ought to be able to have a checklist, it seems. And so I think, at least from, that's something I'd be really interested in supporting as well.
We, we can commit to drafting a checklist.
And we'll have Vice President Bogus with the closing comment.
Yeah, and I guess to say, I think like the goal is not to micromanage or dictate how staff does their job or organize themselves. I think just for me as a board member, just figuring out how not to kind of get caught by surprises and to know that we've done everything we can to put staff in a place to be successful. And if something isn't working that way, for us to have the ability to kind of fix it before my email no longer operates in the way it was intended. And so I think just, just lifting that up. Thank you.
Thank you for that closing comment. And we will have roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Was this item moved?
I thought it was.
Second.
It was. Was it, if I, that's what I'm asking, I just need to, I don't recall. I missed it. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Xu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. We are now heading into Agenda K, Board Members' Reports.
We need to do the consent calendar.
Oh, consent, yes, thank you. Sorry, this is what happens going into hour six, nearly hour six. So apologies, we are now going to move back to Agenda E, the Consent Calendar. At this time, can I get a motion in a second? I will now open for a public comment. Members of the public may comment on any matter on the consent calendar, but members of the public shall not be permitted to sever agenda items for discussion. Seeing none. Any items to be withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
Yes, we have one item corrected. And that item is on the personnel report. We've listed Christine Klein as being hired by SFSD, but it's actually Christine Hardeman. So just the name, the name is the wrong one. Christine Hardeman instead of Christine Klein.
Which number?
It's the personnel report.
Head of, head of HR, Bajor, could you just signal, is Ms. Hardeman certificated or classified? So.
It's eight. I'm sorry, what, from what last name to what last name?
It's number eight.
It's a number eight, yeah.
It's the first page of the class of, sorry, the Certificated Personnel Actions Report, Recommended Appointments.
Okay, seeing that corrected under item eight, Personnel Resolutions. Any items removed for first reading by the board?
Yes.
Sorry, number eight, 10, 11, 31, 32. Any items severed by the board or superintendent for discussion or vote tonight? That's what it is.
I think that's what Commissioner Xu wanted to do.
Did you have one?
I think that's what Commissioner Xu was trying to do, not for first reading, but for.
For severed, for discussion.
For discussion and vote.
Okay, so for clarification, eight, 10, 11, 31, 32 are severed by the board for discussion, vote tonight. So at this time, I'd like to call on, roll call vote on the consent items minus those four, or those five.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Xu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? President Lamb?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Case. Commissioner Xu on item number eight.
Yes, item number eight, actually, right under Christine Klein, that list, is Erica Lingrelle. And that is an online learning program assistant principal. I thought we were not having that anymore. And this is for the next year, this coming year, July 1st, 2022 to June 23.
That is accurate. That position was filled prior to the conversation with the board, and it looks like it was not removed in there.
So it should be removed.
Yes, that should be removed.
Yeah, on eight, also, I was like, would like to have a discussion in closed session about the teacher from Flynn, if that's possible.
The name of the teacher in Flynn? Sorry.
Oh, Christina Flores.
So the motion is to sever and move this item to closed session? It is necessary, and I would just caution board members that you did delegate this authority to the superintendent, so this would be a deviation from your rules.
So just for clarification on the severing of the, what was brought up for, by Commissioner Xu, is that accurate? Deputy Superintendent Ford Morthell?
Yes, after the board's decision to not have a virtual school, yes.
Can I ask a question about that? In fairness to the person, and question here, what, what happens then?
We will work with her to find another position or to figure out what the next step is. Sorry, I don't know the answer to that question at this point.
Thank you.
Are we done with eight?
Yes, so let's go to number ten.
So I guess two things on eight, right? One was to remove Erica Lingrelle from this list, and then one was to sever the other person?
Right, so you, you need a motion and a second on the sever item and then a roll call vote.
So we'll do them separately.
Sorry. The roll call vote on the, so the motion on the floor, I believe, Commissioner Alexander, correct me if I'm wrong, is to move this item into, to sever it from tonight's agenda and to move it into closed session next, at the next regular meeting.
The whole thing, number eight, or that one person?
Just that one person.
That's correct. Thank you.
Who seconded it?
I did, Lisa.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Roll on that item. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Xu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomadi?
No.
Commissioner Lamb?
No.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Four eyes. Excuse me, five eyes.
Item number 10 is the request to accept privately funded gifts, grants, and donations. Can I just ask, is 10 and 11, ask the CFO perhaps to, to tell us how much private fund gifts have we received this year and how much grant money for number 11 have we received this year? You may not have that number right now, but it would fall into what we discussed last time of putting in context in the, last time we talked about contracts, spending money, this is receiving money. I think I would like to also get a context on that.
Commissioner, to address your question, I just want to highlight that this item is actually completed by Deputy Superintendent Gentle Blights' team. That is something that I can speak with Ms. Blights about to see if we can prepare a common format to provide that additional context.
That'd be great, thank you. So that's 10 and 11. So I'd like to roll call vote for 10 and 11, please.
On 10 and 11, Commissioner Alexander?
So having severed them from the consent report, we should do a roll call vote on them separately?
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. We voted on the motion to sever the individual, we didn't vote on the item.
I apologize, Commissioner, I thought it was a combined motion. So, so you've recorded, Mr. Steele, you've recorded that motion as an approval to sever?
Correct.
Okay, so just to be clear, any board member can sever an item from consent without a roll call vote? So I think the vote that we want to take on each item now is to approve it after you've had discussion or to approve the recommendation or not.
I just think it wasn't clear on the eight. I think that what we thought we were voting I think that what we thought we were voting on was severing that particular teacher and taking it to closed session. I don't think we thought we were voting on the rest of eight. So I think what we thought we did was we just severed that, sent it to closed session, but eight as a whole is, hasn't been approved by the board, I think.
Go back to approve eight.
Do you have a? Can I, can I ask a question procedurally? We're moving to approve it as modified.
Correct. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner, our Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutamidi?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Seven eyes on eight, it's modified.
So we'll take individual votes for item number 10. Do you have a? Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutamidi?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
That's seven eyes.
Roll call for consent item number 11, please.
Thank you for 11. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutamidi?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Item number 31.
On 31, Commissioner Alexander?
Discussion.
Item number 31, let me get there, let me get there. Okay. 31 and 32 actually are connected, and maybe it's Chief Commoner Nathan. They're both contracts, and one has a, 32 shows the total percentage of modification amounts to the original contract. But 31 does not, and is it because 31 is, the modifications are way more than the original contract? And if so, why so drastically?
Commissioner, if you could just give me a minute so I can log in and look at the item, and see if I actually, we'll remember this one off the top of our mind.
Yeah, 31 has an original contract amount of $22,000, some change, and modifications of $175,000, plus two more thousand. Whereas 32 has original contract of roughly $29,000 with modification of, you know, sorry, 29 million, sorry. Modification of 1.5 million or so, with a 5% modification to original.
Commissioners, I'm happy to return if the answer I'm about to provide is insufficient. But several types of services that we have at the district are basically, and in this case, I'm looking at this consulting program, and it's an industrial hygienist. So we have a single contractor who is providing services across many different projects. So it's not that you can look at a specific contract and say that project is over budget. It is, we are employing them across many different projects as we deliver them to come back and provide services, you know, over and over again within a specific project, but on a kind of job basis, I would call it. And so for that reason, looking at it from a change order perspective doesn't really apply for something like inspection services or an industrial hygienist.
Then my comment is that it's presented as modifications to the original contract, which is the same way it was presented for the other project based. So it's just a little confusing. Maybe there's a different way that it can be presented.
Commissioner, we are in agreement with you. This has been a longstanding theme now for about a few months as we've tried to figure out how to treat these kind of professional, non-design-related professional services contracts in a way that is distinct from like, design and construction, so that that is more visible. It's going to take some undoing, and in the meantime, I think probably what will happen is as we create new pools for the next bond, that is when you will see it completely cleaned up. Right now, because of the base contract that we use to establish these services, it's probably gonna look like this for a little bit longer.
Okay, let's do, Commissioner Shu, do, did you get, we addressed 31 and 32 at the same time? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes, is this for 31?
Yes, it is. Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutamidi?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Item number 32, please.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, Commissioner Alexander? Vice President Bogus, excuse me, Commissioner Alexander?
Yeah, yeah.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutamidi?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to item F, retroactive contracts, consent calendar. Do I have a motion as second on the retroactive contracts from the consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
Members of the public may provide public comments, so open up for public comment. Seeing none. Any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent? Any items severed by the board or superintendent for discussion or vote tonight? Seeing none, roll call on retroactive.
Yes.
I have a comment. Why are there so many more retroactive contracts this time than the last time, when we were under the impression that this section would decrease over time?
It really was just a matter of timing, so that the reasons for the retroactive resolution are not, are not different than what we explained to you before. It was more of a matter of, you know, getting leaders and getting administrative teams to get them in in a timely manner by the various cutoffs. And so we do expect to see a decrease. I'm actually set to all the principals and lead, I'm not gonna approve any more retros, but, but they are working really hard to get them all in and get them done, and make sure they understand and learn the system going forward. So I anticipate a decrease in the, in future board meetings.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutamidi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you, this brings us to, sorry, Judson.
Sorry.
This brings us to agenda item K. Board members' reports, report from standing meetings. Like to start with the Augmented Ad Hoc Committee on Student Assignment, which happened on Thursday, April 28. Chair Bogus?
Thank you. We had a committee meeting. It went well. We talked about the possibility of expanding the timeline for the school assignment process. Currently, that's a decision that is left up to the superintendent and his team, but I think we as a board are looking at how we can push in and kind of redirect that process and kind of help adjust kind of based on where we're at currently. I believe there is another meeting that is set, but I'm not remembering the date of now, but I do believe that will be available on the website shortly. Thank you.
We had a series of special meetings and closed session items on Saturday, April 30th. Saturday, April 30th, Sunday, May 1st, Thursday, May 5th. And the closed session item was the Public Employee Appointment. And to review, the board met to review applications for the position of the superintendent of schools. And just last night, we had the Augmented Curriculum Program Committee.
We did. Thank you. We had three informational items, all of which will be coming back to the board in one fashion or another. The Virtual Academy that the board voted on several weeks ago, I think is gonna come back. I think Commissioner Alexander is going to work with board leadership to see if it can come back to the board for another discussion at a regular board meeting. So more on that later. And then the new teacher project, K-5 Literacy Audit Review, and the Literacy Update Proposal for 2022, 23 school year were presented as well by staff. And for the public, they're all on board docs, so if you'd like to visit them, please do.
Okay, Board Delegates to Membership Organizations, seeing none. Other reports by board members, seeing none. And at this time, just to announce any upcoming committee meetings, I'd like to ask our chairs.
So yeah, Budget and Business Services was rescheduled for tomorrow, so you didn't miss it. If you thought you missed it, you didn't miss it, because it should have been last week, but it's tomorrow. And we're gonna spend a big chunk of time talking about the LCAP, and I'm looking at data on our LCAP goals, and really talking about how student outcomes are going on those goals. So if you can't come, there'll probably still be some really good materials I would anticipate to check out.
And next Wednesday, May 18th, is the Rules Committee meeting, and on the agenda is a review of legislative priorities. And several action items are on board policies that have been referred from this body to rules. And we will get an update also on the Community Schools Partnership Program from the state. So those, oh, and we are doing, we are working towards the best practice of posting our agenda and materials a week in advance. So hopefully, you will see that post tomorrow or Thursday. And I encourage my colleagues to attempt to do the same.
Commissioner Mutamidi really like, setting the tone for the rest of the committees. You hear that, chairs, committee chairs? Commissioner Shu?
Actually, and then we also have done, I took a note from Budget and Business Services, and internally, we have clocked times for each agenda item, which works, has been working well with Budget and Business Services, so.
Yeah, the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting will be on May 23rd, which is the day before our next regular board meeting. So I'll announce it today. On the agenda will be the bond update and a Real Estate Department update that tells us what we all, what we own, all the things that we own and what we do with it so far. And then a Mission Bay presentation.
Thank you.
And, and then on Thursday, we have the Ad Hoc Committee on Personnel Matters, Labor Relations, and Affordability, and we'll get another detailed update from HR and Kristen Bajure. That's at 5:30.
Thank you. Now, moving into item L, other informational items. Just wanted to note, we have three informational items listed. And do you want to acknowledge that we have public comment for L3? Mr. Rex Ridgway? Yes. There's no presentation, so go ahead and provide public comment.
So L3 was Spark, and that was the, well, I assume it was a presentation, but it doesn't matter. My public comment on Spark relative to their own report, that they said that they gave the African-American Achievement Learning Initiative $611,000 over three years. And they gave the donations, they came in from corporate donors, that $1.4 million and some change went to the 20 pitch schools over three years. This is the same entity that received, on the average, $15 million a year. Over the last three years, they received around $45 million. And so I look at the test scores of Bret Hart, 8% read at grade level, Carver, 19%. Just look at the Bayview schools, and I'm thinking, how can an entity like Spark receive, since 2015, mind you, $67 million? I know this because I pulled the tax returns. Okay, that's public, you can pull that and see for yourself. How can an entity bring in all that money from, from Salesforce and others, $67 million over the last three years, about $45 million, but only throw some chump change over to the African-American Achievement Learning Achievement Initiative of $611,000? I'm just putting that out there. Whatever they're, they, they, my question is, should more be given? What's being done with the money that is giving? The bottom line is, the results of the Bayview schools, the pitch schools, and their test scores are terrible. Anybody want to comment? I would love to find out what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. So tonight, moving into item M, Memorial Germa, there is none. Item N, closed session. At this time, before the board goes into closed session, I call for any speakers to, closed session items listed in the agenda, there'll be a total of five minutes for speakers. I see one hand.
Sylvia, go ahead, please. Go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Sylvia Yee, I'm sorry, I wanted to.
Sylvia, we, we can't, we can't hear you. Would you, are you able to maybe turn up the volume on your phone a little bit? Okay.
Can you hear me now?
It's, it's far away.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll get, I'll get closer. Is this okay?
Yes, this is, that's much better, thank you.
Okay, good. I actually wanted to comment on the Spark annual report that you had.
I'm sorry, Sylvia, we've, we've moved on from that, that item.
I'm sorry, I raised my hand. Okay, thanks, I know it's a late night, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's have Sylvia give her comment, if she hasn't.
Sylvia, are you still, here you are.
I am, I am still here.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, if you can hear me clearly, I wanted to just say a few words. I'm a founding board member of Spark San Francisco Public Schools, and I appreciate that you have a very full evening, but I just wanted to take a brief moment to put some context around Spark. As you know, we're a nonprofit that is a supporting organization of the school district, and it has a board of nine community members, like myself, and four ex officio district staff members, including the superintendent. And Spark raises private funds for the district's strategic priorities, the district's mission, and what we find its very inspiring vision 2025. Spark doesn't run any programs. We help by opening doors to major donors and philanthropic institutions, and help by building long-term relationships and trust in the public schools. So having an independent audit of the private funds that are raised, and ensuring that timely and meaningful reports are made to funders help build that trust. Over its seven years of existence, Spark has actually grown and raised $98 million for priorities that you know well, including building the teacher pipeline, the African-American Achievement and Leadership Initiative, and workplace and career readiness work to prepare students for high school and beyond, which benefit all students. And in addition, I've seen how having an entity such as Spark has also helped the district to be nimble in raising funds to respond to unexpected student needs during the pandemic, particularly for 48,000 laptops and 7.2 million meals. I know that other districts look with some envy at what San Francisco schools are able to do because it has a supporting organization such as Spark. And so to close, I speak on behalf of the other board members when I say that it really is an honor to be part of Spark and to be able to partner closely with the district's talented staff to raise these funds. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this item.
Okay, so the board will now go into closed session. Thus, I call a recess of the regular board meeting. All right. We'd like to reconvene to open session. A roll call on vote on student expulsion matters? Roll call, please.
You need to... I'm sorry, President Lamb. You need to go ahead and just read through that script there, and then we do them individually?
This is Kirk, the ASL interpreter. We can't hear you.
One moment will be...
Can you hear us now?
We can hear you now.
Okay. So reconvening to open session. Item one, vote on student expulsion matters. I move approval of the expulsion agreement of one high school student, matter number 2021 to 2022, number 16, from the district for the remainder of the spring semester 2022, suspended enforcement of the expulsion for spring 2022.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Seven. Six.
I move approval of the expulsion agreement of one high school student, matter number 2021, 2022, number 17, from the district for the remainder of the spring semester 2022, suspended enforcement of the expulsion for spring 2022. Like to ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Item number two, vote on employment contracts for unrepresented head executive or chief head executive employees. I move to ratify the contract for the general counsel with a salary set at grade M28, step 9, to commence on July 1st, 2022, and terminate on June 30th, 2023, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. Ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
I move to ratify the contract for the head academic officer with a salary set at grade 6, step 6, for a term commencing on July 1st, 2022, and terminate on June 30th, 2023, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. Second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
I move to ratify the contract for the head of Special Education Department with a salary grade set at grade 6, step 5, for a term commencing on July 1st, 2022, and terminate on June 30th, 2023, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. Like to ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? Commissioner... President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
I move to ratify the contract for the head financial officer with a salary set at grade 6, step 3, for a term commencing on July 1st, 2022, and terminate on June 30th, 2023, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. Like to ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
I move to ratify the contract for the head human resources officer with a salary set at grade 6, step 3, for a term commencing on July 1st, 2022, and terminate on June 30th, 2023, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. Ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
I move to ratify the contract for the head of facilities with a salary set at grade 6, step 8, for a term commencing on July 1st, 2022, and terminate on June 30th, 2023, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. Like to ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
I move to ratify the contract for the head of research planning assessment with a salary set at grade 6, step 8, for a term commencing on July 1st, 2022, and terminate on June 30th, 2023, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. Like to ask for a second? Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
I move to ratify the contract for the head of staff with salary set at grade 6, step 8, for a term commencing on July 1st, 2022, and terminate on June 30th, 2023, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. Like to ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Wiseman Ward? Commissioner... President Lamb? Six eyes.
I move to ratify the contract for the head of student and family services with a salary set at grade 6, step 5, for a term commencing on July 1st, 2022, and terminate on June 30th, 2023, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. Like to ask for a second? Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
I move to ratify the contract for the head of technology with a salary set at grade 6, step 8, for a term commencing on July 1st, 2022, and terminate on June 30th, 2023, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. Like to ask for a second? Roll call.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
I move to ratify the contract for the head of technology with a salary... Oh, just read...
Wait, wait, you already did that one.
Thank you.
Yes. Do we do a general counsel? Okay, great.
That concludes Section 2, Voting on Employment Contracts for Unrepresented Chief Executive Employees. Report from closed session in the matter of student PSM versus SFUSD, OAH, number 2022020622. The board by vote of seven eyes... Wait. Seven eyes gave the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. On two matters of anticipated litigation, the board by vote of seven eyes approved settlement and release agreements. Concludes report from closed session. And we are adjourning at 1:25 a.m. Thank you.